Call to order the work session of the Pinehurst Village Council for December 13th, 2022. We have four items for discussion. And the first one of those under Agenda Number Two is discuss and approve proposed 2023 Village Council meeting schedule. Does the clerk or the village manager have any comments about that?
Jerry, I guess very, just very briefly, John. Every year at this time, we ask the council to basically reaffirm or give us a thumbs up or give some direction on changes to the annual meeting schedule. And this is important because once we get this published, then we don't have to publish special notice for any of these meetings. So I think what Kelly has done here is rolled forward exactly the same framework that we had for your meetings this past year. But if you have other desires, this is a good time to let us know.
Jeff and I talked a bit about this earlier today, reflecting on different times that the council had met over the years. But this schedule's been in effect for some time. It seems to create a reasonable balance for the public, for the council members, and for the staff. But are there other suggestions or questions that council members may have? Anything here? All right. I will approve that. We'll take a quick vote. All in favor of the schedule as proposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, I should have done that a little bit more formally. Pat, would you move on item number two there? Go ahead and...
I move approval of the schedule of council meetings for...
No, I second it.
...2023.
It's on the green sheet. All right. This is motion by Pat Mazella. Is there a second? I think by Jeff Morgan. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? That carries. And also on the key partners and collaborators list. I went through this. Didn't see any particular change. Lydia and I had a discussion at the end of Friday's meeting, Friday's retreat meeting, about the possibility of including other organizations, one of them being U.S. Kids. And I thought we might do on that is, I'd like to have them come in and talk to the council sometime in the next month or two and outline further what their businesses are here, how that's, how everything's working for them. And perhaps we can consider a further liaison after that, after that point in time. But that might make sense.
That's fine with me. I just, as I mentioned in our retreat, U.S. Kids Golf has a very large footprint in Pinehurst.
Yeah.
But we know very little about what they do. So I think it's wonderful if they would come to a meeting and explain what they do and answer questions and...
I think it fits right into with outreach, not just to them, but to other businesses in the community and that we don't necessarily have a lot of contact with and understand that better as a part of the outreach to the business community that we talked about last week. So with that to be worked on, are there any other changes that council members would like from your own responsibilities for the next year? Seeing none? We can move on from that. We just, we don't need to approve that beyond where we are right now then. Okay, we'll go to item number four. Discuss the downtown amenity plan. I believe that will bring Mr. Batten.
Will.
At least with papers. Thank you, Jeff.
Kelly, do we have the... This page here open also? I'll delete it right down, but okay.
We have one handout from you, Jeff. Is there, are there others or is this, is this it? Okay.
I'll admit, I struggled a little bit with how we wanted to go through this, but I think I've got an idea.
Well, okay. I'm happy to hear that. Just to get us all on the same page a bit though, where we left off with Mike Apke and you last month at our November 15th meeting, we understood very, how can I say, very underscored in a way that what we need to be doing is making some decisions to stage and plan certain projects that need to be started on the one hand, but stage them in a, in a way that will allow other work to go on later. And I think too, as a part of that, there was a general agreement among council that some of the projects dealing, and maybe all, dealing with road narrowing, sidewalk changes, traffic flow were not particularly of interest, but everything else was. That may not be completely correct, but Jeff, why don't we move ahead in a way that you feel...
Okay. So let me kind of explain kind of what I'm thinking here and see if y'all are okay with us proceeding this way. So I've scrolled down to the midsection of the booklet that I sent to you guys. And it's starting at page 15, but I'll be pulling it up here as we go through it. But what I was thinking related to going through this would be, on page 15, we have essentially all of the projects, more or less, those are not all of them because there are three additional things here that I want to mention to this list. But in terms of going through the various recommendations, I thought we would proceed every page hereafter is the various recommendations. And I thought we just kind of worked down each one of them and say, yes, a yes, no, we're not interested in that, we are interested in this one. And then I would also ask for a priority, high priority, medium priority, low priority. With that information, we could come back and we should be able to build a, a general implementation plan when I know what is of high priority to you and what is of no interest to you and what is maybe of lower priority, but some interest to you. So that's how I was thinking of proceeding. If that's agreeable with everyone to try that route, then that's what we would, that was what we would try to, try to do.
And the map in front of us is on page 15 of the overall amenity plan, which is in our documents.
Slide 15, it's page 29, because these are two pages, as you see up here. The page on the left is 28 and the page on the right is 29.
Okay, yes.
In terms of, but it's slide 15 on, in terms of how it's...
Slide...
Because this was actually created as a booklet, but we're looking at it in a slide presentation.
Okay, I got it right here.
Got it? So I did want to mention there was three things in addition to the 10 items essentially listed there. And that is, we have our landscape construction plans in process for all of the plant beds downtown. Update on that real quickly. We got the draft end of last week. It has been circulated to the beautification committee subcommittee that's working with this project. They are providing me, have provided me comment back. Tomorrow or Thursday, I'll be compiling those and sending them back to McAdams. And then we will see a second draft of the actual construction plans, the plans to renovate each of the landscape beds. So that's one component that, you know, is not necessarily specifically listed here on the list, but it is included as part of this package. Okay? The second thing I want to mention is, and this was brought up at the retreat last week and the mayor has mentioned it previously, that is the intersection of Chinkopin and Magnolia Road and a potential allway stop there. So I'm adding that into this discussion today, even though it's not specifically on that list of 10 items there. And then the last thing that, John, you mentioned previously, as we were, as an introduction, we talked about stormwater and road resurfacing. And they do relate to this process as well. And so even though it is not specifically called out up here on this list, it is something that we need to factor in and put into the proper sequence. Update on downtown stormwater. We've got three current alternates plans, if you will, that the engineers have looked at. And we are looking at a fourth potential alternate to address primarily the stormwater issues on Chinkopin along the south side between Magnolia and down to basically Drum and Quill and then Market Square as well. So we'll have some more work to do on those stormwater concepts, but that's, that's where that stands currently. Okay. So with all of that, what I'd like to do now is go into the next page and kind of work from there down. What I provided you, I'm going to also pull up from time to time on the board up here, is just the overall map of downtown. And I really wanted to do, have that so that, you know, when, as we are talking about some of these elements within this plan, recommendations within this plan, we will be able to go back in and say, okay, we're talking about this area right here or this area right here. Okay? Just to help get us all oriented. So without further ado, let's, let's jump in then. All right. So the first item of consideration that you guys have kind of given me a little hint of before relates to traffic circulation. And there's two components here that are primarily of interest. One is this decision point right here. This is where Dogwood, Chinkopin, Cherokee kind of all come together. And you can see it again, kind of highlighted right over here. And one of the recommendations was to realign that to be more of a four-way as opposed to its current somewhat quirky type of intersection that it is today. And so I don't know if that's one, again, of interest to realign that or if you're fine with the way that intersection is. I got two nods of no, we're fine with the way it is.
I think that was one we were generally agreeable, we're not interested.
That's what I sort of got the impression previously from you, that that was a no. So I'm not even going to ask about a priority then. So right now, that's shelved.
I'm also going to say, I was at the Pinehurst Business Partners and this is not scientific, but everybody I talked to about it was like, forget changing the traffic pattern, forget realigning the streets, just don't do it, forget the sidewalk, forget it.
This is what we're hearing from the public as well.
So...
Quirkiness is in 100 years after...
All right. So I'm assuming that also means leave the one-way as it currently sits today and not reverse it as recommended. Is that...
The one-way on Market...
Market Square. Thank you for clarifying that.
I don't think we should proceed with that. I actually think it makes sense, but I don't see it fitting in with all the other things we want to do down there.
Okay.
But we're fine.
This area right here in this green box, one of the other recommendations that is on this, this page is to close that slip lane that goes right by the Holly Inn and then goes down Dogwood. Because it was all a component of this intersection.
Oh, yeah, related to the cleaning out the...
It's a way to clean up the intersection too. So that is, assuming is a no, because it wouldn't make sense to do it if we're not going to do that.
Correct.
So that's off the list. And then the last thing is crosswalks at the intersections. We know we want to do those, but they should not be done until after the road is resurfaced. We shouldn't do it now and then turn around and have to redo them. So I'm assuming y'all are okay that we keep that on the list, that we, you know, that is something that is needed.
I think you're, you're right. I would just clarify, we're presuming that the crosswalks would be done before June of 2024?
Correct.
Okay.
We would like to see the road resurfacing done before 2024. And of course, the road resurfacing would necessitate restriping of parking bays as well as crosswalks. And we have some crosswalks that are currently not marked, that do need to be marked. And so we'll also include those at that appropriate time. That's kind of naturally going to be a high priority if we resurface. We have to do that, so...
Yeah.
Okay. Next page. Market Square. This was related to the widening of sidewalks. And so what you see up here on the screen is, where my arrow is, this is representation of what it, they would recommend it be in this segment of Market Square, where it is already narrowed. So this would be get even narrower because it's going to remove the on-street parallel parking there and add a sidewalk behind the RE/MAX building side as well as widen the sidewalk. So this section here is this section. This section over here represents this portion of Market Square right here. And so it would also widen the sidewalks, change the angled parking on the building side where the nail place is and the Nikos, thank you, it would be located to parallel and widening the sidewalks. And so those are the questions on this one. Do you have any interest in that, pursuing that at any point in time, whether it's a high, medium, or low priority? I got two shake no's.
Well, I just want to talk a little bit further about the, the narrow portion of the street, Jeff, your first, your first pointer there. We're not going to change the traffic flow. We just agreed not to do that, all right? So why, is there anything connected to the way the street is used pre-decision on the sidewalks that would recommend widening it right there? It's, it's obviously a very narrow spot right now for cars to come through. They're coming off the slip lane there and also up Dog, Azalea or whatever it is, no, Dogwood. Does there any, any reason behind that request from the designers here? What, what were they having in mind?
Yeah, two, two components here. One is to widen the sidewalk on the building side, so the Dugans side, bump and baby side, make that sidewalk a little wider. The second component was to add a sidewalk behind the RE/MAX side. There currently is no sidewalk on that, behind that building. But in order to gain the space for both of those, you would have to lose those parallel parking spaces that are along the, the Dugans and the bump and baby side of the road.
So it's going to become much narrower in what, what already is the narrow portion of the street?
The narrow portion that is the travel lane would still be a travel lane. You would lose the parking bays that...
Right.
You're on the right-hand side.
Because you'd have sidewalk change.
And the travel lane would have to shift closer, you know, kind of to the building, closer toward the building to give the room for the sidewalk behind RE/MAX to be actually installed.
Now, one of the things that stood out to me when we first started looking at this some time ago, not just Market Square, but the other road changes, is the narrowing of the street in favor of the widening of the sidewalks throughout the village gets into issues about how, how trucks are going to come through and what, what do we do when there's a delivery, if, if the loading zone can't be used? I'm afraid that's probably what would happen here in Market Square if we narrow the street even further in favor of sidewalks on the side. And there would be very little room for, you know, larger trucks of some size to come, come through there. I know we have to have a certain legally approved, DOT-approved width, but it's going to be real tight if we do anything with the sidewalks there, right? I suppose we could do one sidewalk, but not the other?
It could be. Yeah. I mean, it, I mean, this shows a 10-foot walk on ones, on the side that's behind the RE/MAX. You know, a five foot is a six foot in commercial district is the standard. But even I think to do a six foot, you would still lose the parallel parking space. I still don't think there's enough room to do a six foot on one side, leave the other one alone and still have parallel parking and a travel lane. I, I don't think that's wide enough there for all of that.
If we did, what, just one second then. If we did sidewalks on one side, let's take on the business side first, the right as we're looking at it. Now, that would allow some other activity on the street. Pop-up tents, street dining potentially for the restaurants or not?
Think, I'm not 100% certain that this is not already 10-foot on the building side. It may or may not be, it may be eight feet. So 10 feet, I don't believe provides enough room for outdoor dining and pedestrian use. When you look over here at the lower end, you can see the width that they've got here is 23 feet in total, including street trees, but that accommodates this outdoor dining as well as, you know, the ability for, for people to walk. What's the magic number as far as the, the linear or width for dining and pedestrian? I think we see that in a few more slides when we talk about the south side of Chinkopin. It maybe it's 14 feet total or something like that is sort of more the minimum, I think, based on what they show.
What I was going to speculate on was a little bit what you said, is that the side of the street that, the back of Agora and that side, if you were to expand the sidewalk there a little and sort of, and remove much of the, they only have so many parallel spots there. I don't know how many that go down that side.
Well, on a, behind Agora, they do actually have angled parking bays behind there.
Oh, those are angled.
Behind the old BB and T thing.
Yes.
Yeah, those are angled.
Those are angled.
And they're angled across...
But as you get further down, you get...
They become parallel. That's right. In front of Old Sporting Gallery.
Ford and Sparrows.
That's right. Exactly.
So if you, what I was thinking is that leave the sidewalk on Niko and the parking on Niko as it is now, that side of the street, and do something on this other side where you create a little more sidewalk and maybe you put a few golf cart parking spots there so you're not, people aren't pulling cars, which would create a little bit more of a, of a pedestrian sort of type square without impacting the parking on the Niko side and really not shrinking the road too much since it's, at the end, it's a one-way street anyway.
Right.
So no one's coming in and...
Well, I wouldn't say that.
That's true.
That's part of the problem.
I will, I'll amend that.
But it's...
But that's, anyway, that was, that was a thought that crossed my mind as I was watching at there because one is you give, but put a little more golf parking, a few little golf parking spots and the same time you're enlarging the sidewalk a little on that one side of the street. I don't know if it's a good idea or not, but...
Yeah, I'm not sure. That's kind of the backside of those buildings, so I don't know sure what wider sidewalk, what advantage that provides. Golf cart parking, of course, golf carts can park in a regular parking bay now and so if you leave them as a regular bay, they could either be a car or a golf cart.
Yeah, but in, in the village, as far as I know, there's those three or four golf cart spots, what do you call it, facing cupcakes there? You know that? That's about it, right?
That's right. There's like four there.
Four, okay.
That's it.
And, but that's, that's it for the whole...
That's really it for the whole village. But anybody can park in a regular space, however...
That's right. I'm trying to discourage people from using the big, the regular space.
Yeah, and, but you can get three golf carts in a, in a one parallel parking bay for a car.
Right.
Yeah. So based, just based on the length of the, of the cart. So...
So on Market Square, there's sort of what, two basic things. One is the narrow part, what to do with that, and the other is whether we want to improve the sidewalks all the way down to the end of the street.
Yeah, I mean, if I was going to widen sidewalks personally, I think you would widen them on the existing businesses' side, probably.
Business side, yeah.
It seems that would be more intuitive to me, but what do I know?
Why would we widen them? I, I never see people, they seem to be adequate right now.
Yeah. Well, I think the whole idea here was to make this sort of a village square or, you know, more much, the whole idea actually behind a lot of these recommendations is to make the pedestrian experience better and more inviting. Outdoor dining animates the area. I think there's, you know, without expanding any of that sidewalk, there's really not any room for outdoor dining. But I think...
I think it's in green right there. It just says improving the pedestrian experience. I spent a lot of time in Europe, living over there, and I'll tell you, there's a lot of pedestrian roads basically. And I've talked about this before, about making walking streets and things like that where you end up having increased pedestrian traffic, increased, you know, going to shops and restaurants and things like that secondary to it. And I think it's, it's very charming. It's, it's very helpful for the businesses across the board. You're getting the trucks away and the cars away from that. The idea there, and John, you mentioned, you know, with deliveries and things like that, when you have large sidewalks, the way they did it in Europe was that the delivery trucks would show up at about eight o'clock or nine o'clock in the morning when the pedestrian traffic was very low and they would end up delivering in, in there. I still see your point though, in the sense that you still have a road that's, that's going to be there. I, I don't think this goes far enough to actually make it a pedestrian-friendly type of thing. I think we're trying to do a hodgepodge on this. And the feedback we've gotten so far from, from the folks that are down there with the businesses and the feedback I've gotten from, from residents the area is they'd rather not go with it.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm, I'm in a camp right now. I'd rather not do something that's, it's halfway there. I'd rather do it, that's going to totally do it, or let's leave it the way it is.
Jeff Morgan, to totally do it, describe to me what you mean by that for Market Square.
You got a, you got a very odd road there. It's got a thin part and then a thick part. You got a design right now that's looking to put in a 10-foot sidewalk on each side for the narrow parts and then for the, the wider part, effectively you got a, well, let's just say a nine-foot sidewalk there and a four-foot shrub bed that we're seeing on the, on the left of it and then 12 feet there. And I think it was 11 feet on the other side, the, the arrows blocking that right there. So I'm not really sure it's going to increase the pedestrian traffic to the degree that we want. You've also got the hodgepodge in there in the sense you still have cars that are going down there. There's still going to be parking, a parallel parking with a single aisle in there. It's difficult for people to parallel park lots of times coming in there. You've got the angled parking with it, so you, if, if, if you're coming in there with a, with a Prius, you're probably going to do just fine. If you're coming in there with a pickup truck, you're going to have more trouble. Coming in there with a golf cart shouldn't be an issue. And, you know, we, we got, we got lots of pickup trucks in this, this community also is just like we do the, the Priuses and the golf carts. So anyway, I, right now, this is a lot of money, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of effort, and I'm not seeing where the juice is worth the squeeze in the long run for us. That's my point to it. Now, personally, if we had a proposal up here that says, let's make the whole thing a walking street, which is not what we're having...
Well, you prefer the whole, the walking street.
We would prefer the whole thing just to be purely pedestrian.
Uh-huh.
Okay? But that's not swinging, being presented, that's not up for, for discussion right now. I'd rather not go there.
He wants to go full European.
I, I'm not going to phrase it that way, being I'm from Ashboro, North Carolina. Okay? But I, I think maybe a wise way to look at it is, if it works, why don't we do it?
If, if we don't do something on Market Square, it stays as is. And there's been discussion for quite some time about planting more trees on Market Square, freshening it up. So that's what the consultant's trying to do here.
Well, he's trying to do more than that. He's trying to improve the pedestrian experience.
Oh, yeah. It's much more extensive than we had thought about.
And I've got no problem with planting more trees. I've got no problem with, with shrub beds and things like that that are making it more appealing. But before we go through major construction and spend a lot of money on this, we got to make sure that we're, we're going to a, to do it in game we want to be at. And, and what I'm seeing right here, I'm not like, wow, this is great, let's go for it. Okay?
If we don't do something now though, I'm just speaking generally to everybody, on Market Square, and we start to do all these other projects, we've kind of eliminated Market Square from any improvement for quite some time, I would think.
You've got lighting, you've got some lighting recommendations, but...
Yeah, but that's not, and that's important, but that's not redesigning the tree.
What about the arch? What if, do we, we can keep that?
The entranceway?
The entranceway arch or not?
The gateway arch?
It's, it's the next thing on the list to talk about.
Okay.
If, if we, if we do all of it...
But I would, I would consider that to be combined with, you know, these other...
Yeah, some change.
Enhancements. John, to your landscape point, right now, the way the sidewalk, the width of sidewalk does not facilitate, there's no space for trees.
Right now, yeah. So that if we widen the sidewalks though, say on just the business side, which we're calling it, that gives us the opportunity to have more pedestrian traffic and more shrubbery at the same time. And we left the other side of the street as is, or reworked it a little bit without widening the sidewalk. Because I agree with you, Jeff, there's no, I don't think there's a good reason to have a sidewalk all the way down that side of the street there because most of it's cutting into what is already parking areas, don't you think?
Yeah. The drawing here shows that... Yeah, the drawing here shows that it being kind of like Patrick has indicated, that it's bricked in, but I don't know there's really good, a good reason necessarily to lose those parking spaces for that.
I wouldn't want to lose it. I don't think I'd want to lose the parking on that side.
If you're going to adjust parking, you know, and you widen this to this extent, which I don't know that we have to, we can, when we can go back and reevaluate, can we do something less than this full width and still get planting in and keep parallel parking? I don't know that we can. I'm sorry, angled parking that's there today.
Angled, yeah.
That widening that sidewalk would, would probably require it to become parallel.
You know, Jeff, they, they said, and you had it on one of the screens, implementing high visibility and easy to complete projects first helps garner public support for ongoing work. What are the high, to me, this is not a high-visibility, easy-to-complete project.
No, yeah, you're correct, it's not. This is, this is pretty major work.
Yeah.
The things that I consider are kind of the low-hanging fruit, the easy things, painting the lampposts, which have been done, and we'll get to the lighting here in a minute, but talking about the, the night sky attachments to the lamps so that we're not projecting light up. We, we've already tested a model to make that work. The landscape enhancements, the beds, replanting the beds are also.
They've got amenities, amenities furnishings and planters.
And those items, as well as possibly some enhanced lighting, additional streetlights, street lamps.
They're outlined down, going down Magnolia, if I remember. There was some proposed bollard lighting.
There's, yeah, and we'll talk about that, and we're going to get to it, but yes, you are correct.
Just seems really.
First, you could change that nine-foot part over there on the, on the right with the parallel parking and make that the, the Pizzella parking for golf carts, and just be angled, because nine foot, it wouldn't extend beyond that.
Yeah, you could.
It'd just be special for golf carts.
It's a good valid point. I mean, you could. You could put in quite a few number of golf cart parking spaces there.
I think I, I've seen that in England.
On the business side of Market Square, Jeff, yeah, yeah, yeah. Some, well, to me, I, I think McAdam went too far with the proposals for Market Square, but I'd like to see something done there, and I think they have in their mind that's necessary to create a better atmosphere in the village. Would it be worth to ask them to come up with a modified plan of potentially wider sidewalks on the, on the.
What are we trying to accomplish there?
To, to make it more walkable by having a wider sidewalk on the, we'll call it the retail side of the street, the right side of the street, if you're walking down it. Put in some trees and maybe rework the, that helps rework the parking on the business side behind Agora and down to the shop with some, with some golf cart parking, something like that. I don't, I don't know how you all feel about that. I just, I just think if we don't do something for Market Square, we're losing the chance to make a, a, a change in the core village that isn't changing the streets around, which we don't want to do, but is enhancing the look without, without doing a very large project.
There is one other option that's a lesser, to a degree, I think, requires some evaluation, see if it'll work, but you can lose a few parking spaces and create plant beds that are jutting out from the curb line. But you do lose, you know, you have to take up parking spaces to make that happen.
How will that go over? Parking is such an issue down there, would they rather have planting beds or parking spaces?
Yeah, I would imagine they'd rather have parking spaces because if, if you have traffic going down that road, that now affects the businesses that are there because people don't want to pull in, and you pull in, if you're able to park close to the store you want to go into, that's helpful for the businesses. And, and so that's kind of my comment before, you're, you still have traffic going through there, okay? It's not really enhancing the pedestrian experience that much for what's going on. And so, so we have a, a route right now that's working, we have parking spaces on there. If you want to throw some more plants on there, put some paint on it, put some lampposts and things like that, okay. I, I'm not averse to it, but what we're seeing here, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of money, and the juice isn't worth the squeeze. Okay?
I, I agree. I agree with that, Jeff.
Yeah, and there's so many other things on the list that are going to improve the, the appearance, the vibrancy of downtown.
All right, I'm hearing three, so let's table this.
If, if we don't widen the sidewalk, we can't.
I don't mean table for future discussion, I mean do away with it for.
Right. If we don't widen the sidewalk, though, we can't really plant any trees or do any planting beds.
Unless we remove some parking spaces and take those spaces up and create a plant bed, and then you've got, you know, little plant islands, for lack of a better term.
I've heard a lot of business owners come in here and talk over the past year and saying, hey, we need more parking spaces. I have not a seen, seen a single one that says they need another tree. So, right now, I'm going to stick with, stay with parking places.
I agree.
I'd like to see us do something, but I don't hear.
I, I just, I, I think the lighting is about, it's a limited street. It is just a limited street. There's so much, there's so little we can do with a limited street.
But it's a cute street.
It is a cute street. And with some lighting and.
Yep. Some lighting, a shrub.
They're not going to be any shrubs if we don't make some sidewalk changes, so we're going to be lighting up an area that isn't that attractive, but that.
Well, maybe another day.
I didn't think about that.
But you know, but you know, it, it, it's not, I hate to say it's not very attractive, but if you light it up, it could create more pedestrian traffic at night.
Hopefully, yeah.
Well, I guess beauty is now the beholder. I think it's historic and I like it. I think it's a neat part of town. I will say one other thing that when I mentioned, kind of in jest about the, the parking stuff on there, but having a focus to provide golf cart parking in the future in our town to make it so more people, more, more, more spaces can be in there, I think that's a smart idea.
Well, that.
I think it fits in our character.
Thanks for bringing that up because can that be a component of our intermodal, intermodal transportation plan to, to tell whoever's doing it that we want to create more golf cart parking downtown?
Well, I, I guess my question is.
I think they came up that last week, yeah.
Intermodal transportation plan.
Golf carts would be included in the multimodal issue, and I guess parking would be part of that, yeah.
As it stands today, we have a finite amount of land and space, and to create more cart parking in most instances, but not all, means taking existing car parking spaces and converting them to golf cart.
I hear what you're saying, and, and in that paradigm, I wouldn't necessarily concur with it. If there's ways to look at this, saying, okay, let's put it, this is golf cart parking at whatever location, and, and you're converting 10 car spaces into 15 golf cart spaces, that kind of stuff, you're increasing the traffic that's going down there.
I don't disagree with that, and particularly with our, the proliferation of golf carts in our community. I'm just saying it, it is a trade-off. Whereas, right now, one car parking space can be for a car or for a golf cart.
And I've never seen a hybrid one that can take, you know, this is one car or my.
Right, but if it becomes a carp space, that's all it is.
Yeah.
That's all, that's all I'm saying.
It's a, it's a delicate balance you got to, got to strike.
Yeah.
To judge point. If you can and create.
If you make something a golf cart parking spot, you can't park a car in it.
That's correct.
So you want to be careful not to have too many.
Yeah.
Golf cart parking spaces, but you want to have enough of them.
Right.
So that you can maximize the utility of the whole, overall space.
You could take probably two car parking spaces, though, and make four golf cart parking.
I think it catches what I'm talking about.
Where you double, yeah, no, I, I don't disagree with that.
I don't think we need a, a lot more, I just think we should have a few more in another location, not where they are now.
It might.
And that'll help balance a little.
It might also be true that if, you know, if you built a few more golf cart parking spaces than the current market, if you will, demands, maybe it will incentivize more people to.
Right.
Take their golf carts downtown and help with the old golf problem.
As opposed to taking a car.
Yeah.
So if I, what I'm hearing, I think, is you would, you would be open-minded to considering some car parking spaces potentially being converted to golf cart parking.
On Market Square.
I'm hearing it throughout the village.
Yeah. Find the right location. I don't know.
I, I, I'm, yeah, the right location, just like Patrick said. I, I would end up be interested in seeing that. You know, not, I don't know the measurements of a golf cart, I guess I should since I live in Finers, but, you know, if you were to come in straight onto a street, let's say you have a parallel parking slots, can you actually park directly perpendicular in with a golf cart that'll still fit and be out of the way? I don't know that, but that'd be a question.
Yes, in most cases, I think the answer is yes.
Well, that right there takes two parallel spots, or excuse me, one parallel car spot and makes it two golf cart spots, if that works.
Probably, maybe even three.
Maybe three.
Maybe even three.
If it's long enough.
And so that's what I was kind of thinking in my head, too, was if we were going to do that.
Park that way, or does, do you wind up with one in these, this group of three and one in that group of three?
I understand. I understand all those challenges, it brings, it brings up new things, but we, we just talked before in our strategic planning about the increased proliferation of golf carts. I, I foresee that. I think we just had a company that came in that's now renting golf carts out to people who come in on a short-term basis. I've heard that, I don't know, I haven't specifically identified the company, but I'm getting the impression that we're going to have more proliferation of golf carts, and personally, I would rather see golf carts coming into the downtown area than cars. Okay? I'd rather see that than pickup trucks.
That's the only way I go down there.
Yeah, where we have a whole, a whole lot more people down there and, and it, it cleaner, you're not, you know, sniffing exhaust fumes and things like that.
So long as the golf carts don't use the regular parking, that's, that's the, that's the problem.
Well, you know, and I don't know, that's maybe there's something for them to add.
It's hard to do, yeah.
You know, how do you, how do you maybe use white lines for car parking and yellow lines for golf cart parking? I don't know, you know, how do you make the hybrid? I've, I've got no idea.
Yep, yep.
Look at it.
The only thing we're doing in Market Square would be look at some golf cart parking there as we would across town, and the lighting you're going to get to, but no, no street and sidewalk.
In terms of adding golf cart spaces, I think the maximum use, making sure that the math works, would be to target some parallel parking spaces to convert from a single car to two or three cart parking spaces. So that's where I would start.
Yeah, I, I would think the same thing. Take, take one.
Right.
We can always add, but take one and let's try it, and if it works down there on, on Market Square, that's fine.
Okay, got it.
I suspect in one parallel parking space, you could get at least two to three golf carts coming in at an angle.
That's what I'm thinking, three. It's probably three, but we want to make sure the angle, the math all works.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, amenities, these are the furnishings conversation here. The benches that are proposed are the ones we currently have. However, we would paint those frames green, they're currently black. The trash receptacles, this is a new trash receptacle that would replace the ones that have been down there for about 20 years.
A question, I, I, they don't say how many we have now down there, but then later on in the presentation, they talk about the number 20, to put 20 up. How many trash receptacles do we have now?
I don't know the count off the top of my head, but I can tell you that their mapping is not complete of existing trash receptacles.
Okay, that threw me off, all right.
So if they counted all of the yellow dots as being existing, those are not all where they currently are located. We have more than that.
Yeah, I just think we need a, a few more strategically located because they do, especially as we have more traffic and event, they, sometimes they fill up.
Yeah, we do need to add a few.
We have more than that. Are you saying we need to have more than we have?
I think we need a few more than we have and, and just to avoid the overspill that sometimes happens and, and make it easy for people to throw garbage into a pail, that's my point.
Sure. So, you know, trash receptacles, this is a different receptacle that replaced what we've got currently, to what we've got currently, that's just time for them to go. And then the planters, this is a recommendation to change the, the planters that we have throughout the village. We have three different sizes right now. This is to go to a, a uniform size and something that's less decorative, I think, than what we have currently, something that's probably a little more in keeping with kind of how the downtown looks, and the color is more of a sandy color they are recommending, so. If y'all are good with those, I'm going to move on. I think these are kind of the higher priority items from the standpoint of at least the trash receptacles. We wanted to get those replaced before the 24 open.
Oh, yeah.
The additional benches and getting those frames painted before, green, so everything is matching. We've already done, as I mentioned earlier, the lampposts have all been painted recently within the last two months.
Do, how many bike racks do we have now? Turn them a picture.
We only have two right now, and there are two, like, larger racks. One is over by the Village Green parking lot, the sand lot. The other one is in front of.
Agora?
Uh, yeah, it's kind of between Agora and, and Hutaft, it's kind of tucked in a little area there.
Okay.
But they are recommending that we go with smaller bike racks and more of them, scattered around, so.
I do wonder about bike racks being on the sidewalks so much. I think they need to be around Tufts Park, places where there's a little space, maybe in the, along in the alleyways a little bit. That's just my thinking there.
Yeah, I, I think the way they probably, and I don't know this for sure, I think probably what they have done is sort of scattered them based on this overview of mapping and going, okay, one here, one there, one there, makes sense. I think when you got down to the, you know, the nitty-gritty and said, you know, can we put one in that specific location, we may find that there's not appropriate space or room there, so I think we just have to be selective about that.
I think we ought to.
To your point.
Make point of having one convenient to the library.
Certainly.
That'd be a good place.
Hits me. Ride a bike.
Down there. See the brown dot by the library?
I can't see from here, yeah.
Yeah. The, these are all color-coded, you can see the legend on your lower right-hand side of kind of how they're talking about distributing them. I think this is something that we can massage a little bit, you know, doesn't have to be exact, but it's, it's close. Okay, I'm going to move on to the next one. I think I have an idea of what y'all feel about some of this, but I'm going to start with widening sidewalks on the south side of Chinkelpin. So this is the Drum and Quill side. Do you have an interest in widening those sidewalks? This is the profile that they would suggest. What it does is it is taking up the angled parking that is across the street in front of Magnolia Square and converting it to parallel parking. That's how they're gaining enough room to widen the sidewalks a little bit. So.
This, this is.
Start with that one first.
Eliminating the parallel parking on that side of the street by the Drum and Quill and the.
No, this, this is the Drum and Quill side right here, okay? This is still parallel parking, but the sidewalk is widened, so it, you know, it shifts further out into the road. How they're gaining all of the space is they're eliminating the angled parking that's on this side. Here's the stairwell going, stair steps that go up Magnolia Place to Old Ruzik's building. And so we're adding, they're adding, suggesting add a little bit of additional space here for, for tree plantings and a little more sidewalk, but a lot more over on this side. And that's how they're gaining that space is by taking away this angled parking and And that's how they're gaining that space is by taking away this angled parking and converting it to parallel.
What's the net effect on parking in that area?
Uh, it is a loss.
Pretty big loss, I think, because you're taking on all the angled.
It's, it's, it's in here. I don't recall exactly where it is. It is a net, a net loss there.
I, I hate to parallel park, and I'm not gonna, and I just won't go down there ever again. I mean, that's where we're at.
Jane, your new car will do it for you. Your, your new car will do it for you.
New car.
Haven't you seen those commercials? Jane, you don't have to worry anymore.
How do we sell to the public that we're taking away parking spaces downtown? How do we sell to the merchants that we're taking away parking spaces downtown?
Adding back cart parking, so taking a parallel space and hopefully making it three, and then saying, well, net parking is not a loss.
Oh, no.
The, the big problem for me with this change, though, is again, the width of the road and getting delivery trucks there, um, making sure we leave enough room for them so the cars can get around them. If, if we go to this plan, I'm afraid that, may be wrong. The trucks may be stopped in front of a store, and unfortunately, we can't make all the trucks come at eight, nine in the morning like we can in other, other places, as Jeff Morgan said. And then we've really, uh, we've really created a bottleneck for these deliveries, which unfortunately go on all day long by my experience. Am I, am I missing the width-ing, the widening, the width that's still there, Jeff? Or am I right on the truck traffic?
This is above graphic here is the existing.
That's what it is now.
You can see what it is now. You got a six-foot walkway along that section of, you know, the Drum and Quill area.
Mm-hmm.
You got a parallel parking space. You got a 14 and a half foot wide drive, both of them, and then you have the parallel parking. You could look at a hybrid where you could consider adding some width of sidewalk on one side and leave the other side alone and leave the angled parking as it is, not lose any of their. There's enough room. I think you could add probably four feet of sidewalk on that side and create maybe a little more of a planting buffer. Didn't necessarily have to be trees, but it could be something.
Speaking of pedestrian.
As a potential.
Experience, what about handrails? You know, the.
We don't have anywhere that we have handrails currently, uh, that we own. Um, the only stairs that I can think of are all on private property as it exists today. There's on either side of.
Take a quick.
The front of the department store, uh, going up to Magnolia Place there, Old Rizzuto's building.
Right. I believe.
From anywhere else other than going to the, up to the.
Didn't Darren tell us last week that, um, we can't require handrails for existing buildings? We can for new construction.
True.
So I think to resolve the issue on.
A issue.
Um, with some buildings in town, it's a question of talking to the landlord and seeing if they wouldn't consider that. But I don't think we can mandate that.
Do you want to see if it's possible to expand one side and not affect the other side?
But I might, I might do for that, yeah. That, I'm trying to remember, there's only about four parallel parking spots.
Across Drum and Quill? It's five.
From the corner of Magnolia, yeah.
From, yeah, from the wine shop coming.
To the alley.
Yeah, so it's five spots.
I think it's five, and then there, you go across the alley and there's another two in front of Olive Garden, Olive Store and the other. So I think there's a total of seven all along there.
You know what they should have done? The guy's gonna laugh at me, but they should have turned Chinkopin, Market Square, and Magnolia into a traffic circle with one lane going around like this.
That was what they were thinking of doing, right?
And they could have, could have accomplished, could have kept all the same parking and expanded all the.
It.
Sidewalks.
Well, that can happen now.
I see what you're saying.
But, I mean, how would you, you would actually reconcept the road to make it more of a circle? Or you're just saying?
One way.
So traffic can go around in that circle, so you might, you might have to drive a little further to get to where you're going, but.
You're suggesting make it all one way?
Yeah.
A one-way, I see, happy one-way.
The way, that's the way it is in the big cities.
Yeah.
But do y'all have an interest on, of exploring whether sidewalks on the one side, the Drum and Quill side, being widened or not?
Okay, if we did the sidewalk on that side, that means we would keep the, uh, angled parking on the other side.
That's potentially, I mean, I, yeah. We'd have to see if it would work and how much would you gain. I don't know if you gain enough to put a planting strip or not, but it's, it's a math equation.
What we would get from that would be, we'd lose five parking spots, we'd get more sidewalk.
Uh, you wouldn't lose.
And we might get some landscaping.
Yeah, you still wouldn't lose the parking space.
You're just, you're narrowing the travel lanes.
Further out, away from the building.
Well, that makes that, that makes that road much narrower, so to speak.
Yeah, right now, you got 14 and a half foot drives, and narrower roads slows traffic.
I guess it doesn't because, um, well, those sometimes delivery trucks, if those spots are open, will pull into them.
Yeah.
Those big Cisco ones and those other ones, and they'll pull into them if they're open and they'll make their deliveries there. But if you just have, if those become sidewalks, that eliminates that happening at all. Um, and, uh, and I'm just trying to think what else we get. We gain a, we gain a bigger sidewalk. Yes, and we have gained some landscaping.
That's a particularly narrow sidewalk now, so a little expansion of that wouldn't, wouldn't hurt.
It's actually.
For pedestrian walkability.
It gets narrower as you go to the restaurant because there's, uh, uh, outside dining. That's where it narrows.
But it also narrows along there because the landscaping, there's a little landscaping beds that jump out away from those buildings. And so it still kind of keeps it that same, a little bit that same. It does narrow a little bit more, though, as you point out. Um, but it's fairly narrow sidewalk, and it's the, I mean, that's the one people enter coming from the resort.
Mm-hmm.
But Jeff, what we would gain, we'd get a bigger sidewalk, but the drive-aisles would be 12 feet. I mean, that's where we're gonna gain it, is the 12. Is 12 feet enough? Is that a wide enough?
Yeah, that's, that's a standard 24-foot wide road.
I'm trying to picture leaving the parking spots there and expanding the sidewalk.
Everything over.
I, I know, but there's only so much room. I mean, you are.
That's a pretty wide drive, as he's.
Claustrophobic.
On an ordinary road, you don't have people backing in and out of parking spots all along the road. They, they get on the road and they just go, so. It's, it's hard enough now to maneuver around there. I, I don't, I don't see narrowing the road.
It's whatever y'all's pleasure is.
I, I think it's got some appeal. I just wonder what it's gonna cost to, to widen the side.
If you want me to get some type of, is it even doable? You know, we can, we can do that. It's just.
But wouldn't it be doable to widen the sidewalk, make the travel lane, make the road more narrow?
Yes.
Yeah.
You've got four feet right there now. Five feet, actually.
Mm-hmm, the two and a half and the two and a half.
Half plus two and a half. Yeah, you got five feet to work with.
You're gonna be squeezing up somebody to be.
Traffic.
Less comfortable in order to do something that's, uh.
Well, you know, the good point about, I mean, the thing that has appealed to me is it's a sidewalk coming in from the resort into the village.
Yes, I think that's, that's a good point. And we're gonna, we're gonna hopefully fix that intersection at Magnolia and Chinkopin through this process with an additional stop.
I've got no problem in looking at how we can widen that one sidewalk, um, and then see what happens.
Putting some landscaping in there like you've got in the bottom picture.
And, and not, not expanding the.
Probably wouldn't be trees because of the.
The trees could happen.
Building, but you could do some landscaping, yes.
What, John?
Um, so we're talking about widening the, what would be the south side of Chinkopin for Magnolia down to, uh, to Deli, I guess. How would we, how would we work the sidewalk around there in the future? Was it, that would be expanded a little bit? Make that a.
In front of the.
Past the olive oil shop and going up into.
It would just tie in like it does now.
Okay, but we, but we're not thinking of doing the other side, the north side of the street. Leave the north side in angled parking, try to do some landscaping.
That's what I'm hearing, is leave the north side on the angled parking and potentially consider if you can expand the sidewalk on the south side without.
I'm fine taking a look at.
Getting too narrow. All right. Is this a medium priority to you or low?
Well, this is a high priority, I think. Anything for Chinkopin.
Or high.
Well, Jeff, also, we, we don't have to go from 14 and a half to 12. We can go from 14 and a half to 13 or 14 and a half. We don't have to use all of the available road space to put into a sidewalk. How wide is, how wide is that sidewalk right now?
Six feet.
So if we only go, if we go eight feet, will that make a substantial difference or nine? I'm just.
Thirty-three percent wider.
But that's.
You are correct. Thank you. Um, functionally, yes, I think it will make a difference in allowing more people to get in there. I think the other part of this is it's six feet wide, but it's not six feet wide uniformly down the entire road. You have areas where it narrows, and I think that's where the real benefit's gonna be. Because there's part of that, I think, that goes to about four feet. Um, when we give that narrow section, um, coming off the, the restaurant and, and oil area, so. So I think the additional two feet on there would make a, a significant difference, um, and looking at that. Now, again, I think Jane's comments of what's it gonna cost, things like that, what do you, you know, what's the squeeze and things like that's worthwhile looking. But a 14 and a half foot drive aisle seems like a wide drive aisle, and if you take a foot on each one of those, that seems like reasonable. Thank, so, I'm happy to look at it. See what's wrong, okay? I'm not committing to it. I'm just happy to look at it.
Okay.
And I'd say it's a medium priority personally.
I've kind of circled the high, medium.
Okay.
Yep.
At least to get a consideration, right? After that, you can decide whether you want to pursue it or not.
Well, Jeff, some of the other things that are on the top of the list, the page above, the amenities, those don't seem to be very expensive. This would be much more expensive than what we.
Much more expensive, yes, than the other things, but yes, the.
I mean, the other stuff is low hanging fruit.
I mean, trash receptacles, you know, 750 bucks, 800 bucks per.
Well, we need them.
25 of them. Go ahead.
Go back to your high, medium comment. If, if, if it's high me, the priority for getting the council to make a decision is high.
That's right.
Because it impacts.
It's road resurfacing.
Stormwater and resurfacing.
That's right.
For a decision.
Yeah, and, and I'm, that's, I'm prioritizing at least the determining whether it's feasible.
Yeah.
And then what kind of rough cost could, would, would it be? And then that would be a decision point for you guys before we do stormwater or road resurfacing, yeah.
Well, and the other seems like sort of window dressing where this is an improvement that says to downtown, we really are trying to make downtown better, more than window dressing, to widen a sidewalk, to allow more accessibility from the resort down to, into town. That just seems to have a greater, sent a, sends a bigger message.
I, I don't think, um, I think the downtown merchants from at least my discussions with them, there's three things that are on their mind. One is parking, more parking. We said that. They don't want less parking. They want more. Two, they want enhanced landscaping and that covers all that we've done.
Say again, Pat, we have parking and what?
Parking, enhanced landscaping.
Landscaping, yeah.
Landscaping, and then, and I continually hear, it's anecdotal, but it's somewhat, I take it as serious, the idea, and I think we're addressing it about speed. There is a concern about cars coming from Barrett down to Chinkopin, more so than coming the other way.
Speed on Chinkopin, I think. I don't think speed's a problem on the other streets because they're too narrow and too busy.
It's coming, yeah, coming down from.
Arrow middle, yeah, it'll slow things down.
There is a speed issue.
Those are the three things that I, I keep hearing, so.
But I think we're gonna deal with that speed issue at the Magnolia-Chinkopin intersection.
Yeah, I've got something. I'll show you here towards the end.
And I think the other part that was spiffing up, painting, painting, cleanup, trash cans, all that.
I've never heard anyone say to me, God, I need a wider sidewalk.
But I think if you, functional, for functionality, the wider sidewalk is a good idea. And to add to your point about what they want in here, lighting, some better lighting, especially from the Magnolia in and up to the resort.
The other, I think that is true that in order to achieve their second priority, which is enhanced landscaping, you have to widen sidewalks.
In certain, in some, yeah, if that's, but I think they're also referring to the, um, the existing plant beds.
Yes.
And, and, because, well, that lane, that landscape is 20-plus years old.
The current trees, the current shrubs.
It's time to refresh.
Okay, so you're gonna look at widening the sidewalk and get back to us about it?
Yes, on that one.
Yep.
All right, moving on, uh, Central Plaza.
Mm-mm.
In front of the department store building.
You don't, you don't have the permission of the property owner to do that?
Don't even have it even asked him.
Okay.
It's, anecdotally, what I have heard from you guys is, at least off and on individually, is, yeah, it's too, it's too radical.
He's seen this and he's not buying it.
Yeah. Now, we have the opportunity to acquire that property if we wanted it, but. So is this something that's no, of no interest, leave the parking as is?
Talking about the road in front of.
That's gonna cross, that's, that's a loss of parking space.
It seems like if there was ever a desire to do this in the future, we could do it. It could be done in a later time, right?
Certainly could, absolutely.
It's not tied to anything else.
Right.
It's not. Okay. All right, moving on. This is the parking sheet that we were talking about. The only things I want to mention here are the formalizing the parking spaces on edges of downtown. We're referring to Magnolia Road, south side, south end of Magnolia Road that currently has parking that goes on there. It's, it's not, uh, marked or anything. And adding markings really more along Village Green East by the library where people park currently. It's just not organized and marked that way. Um, so that's really what this note right here is about formalizing the parking spaces on edges of downtown.
Hold on, when you say by the library, you mean people who park on the pine straw?
Well, they park, some park pull in on the pine straw, some park parallel there, but, uh, yes, that is the location that.
Okay.
Talking about formalizing that. Often the pine straw is more parallel. It could either be parallel or pulled in, but I think parallel is really what we were, I think, thinking here.
What does that take on our part? Are we talking about paving anything or just putting up parking signs?
Here, I'd be striping the road. It may have some, may have to have some asphalt added on the inside Village Green side a little bit, but within the right of way.
I'm nervous about that.
I am, too.
Why don't we wait and see?
I might be more convinced, depending on how the library plan develops.
Mm-hmm.
But.
Good point.
To add more parallel parking there, stripe the road, I think that starts to cringe on the, on the Village Green, certainly on the, potentially on the library archives property. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not happy with that.
All right.
I agree.
Two, three, got it. All right, moving on.
That was five, incidentally.
Okay, five. All I need is three. Um, create new angled spaces west of old, of the theater building. That is this area right across the street from the roast office. It's currently that little half.
Yes.
Moon. That is our property. It is not Marty's. Um, and you can get seven parking spaces added right there if you want to do them.
Hold on, I mean, which, which.
Do it. Why wouldn't we do it?
Precisely where is that?
Where is that?
Directly across the street, little half-moon drive there.
On the old roast office.
On the theater building.
That's our property?
The theater building side. It's that little half.
Seven spots you can get there? Oh, angled parking?
Angled, angled parking spot.
Angled, angled, because that's one way right through there, so it has to be angled.
Right.
But, yeah, you can get seven right in there.
By the outside seating for Leesey's, right?
Right before.
It's right beside it. That's right.
Why, what does that take? Just striping it off?
Well, we gotta.
Taking out the bed, creating a curb line and.
What's the argument against that?
Exactly. I was gonna say, why wouldn't we do it?
Against it.
Okay.
We proposed this one time before, previously.
Oh, okay.
I think Susan McKenzie parked there for a long time, and it was just sort of her.
I say do it.
All right, so this was one.
Well, that's one.
Well, so, well, would we be landscaping that area after putting the parking in? How, how would that fit, Jeff? Would there be a sidewalk? Is there gonna be a walkway along the theater building down to Leesey's outdoor?
So you have a sidewalk, you have lands, I think there's a little small landscape bed.
Yeah.
Up against the building, then there's a sidewalk, and then there's the, this half moon.
Yeah.
The only options or opportunities, I think, would be on either end of the seven bays as for, for landscaping. So it would be this little piece right in here that, I don't know why this thing wants to keep turning like that. It's aggravating me. Right there.
Little tip.
Yeah, right at the tip of that, and then right at the tip of that, that's about all you would have opportunities to, to do anything. I don't think you could do anything in more than front or aside adjacent to the building itself. There's just not enough room.
I don't know why we wouldn't do it.
You might even put one golf cart parking spot there.
Make 14 carts, golf cart parking spaces.
That's a good point, though.
But putting parking of some sort, angled golf cart, maybe a little bit, parking the cars, that seems to work.
It's already paved.
Well, it'd have to be redone.
The island has to come out and it'd have to resurface, but when you resurface, that's when you would do it.
I'd like to see, I would like to see some landscaping at either end of the parking space, as you suggested, Jeff, kind of break the.
There's some parking, yeah, and there's some landscaping as you're coming down Cherokee, um, and you're looking to your left at the corner of the theater building. There is a little landscape bed there, and this would kind of slide in behind it as far as kind of how it would come off of Cherokee at an angle.
Jeff, do you know what the, the history is of that, of that being there like that?
I really don't. I don't know.
I always wondered what that was about. I thought maybe there was an entrance there. It looked like sort of a.
Could be.
Drop-off of somebody. All right.
It was very handy during COVID for a pickup lane for Leesey.
Uh, I'm not going to address this one, create new spaces related to circulation realignments because you're not interested in doing any of the circulation realignments.
Right.
Um, leverage existing lots. Um, do want to talk a little bit about that because there were, uh, opportunities for some signage, direct people to our existing public lots. And that's a low-hanging fruit item. Um, the question is, does it make sense to put, if we do it, banner-style signs on lamp posts or ground-mounted signs that, you know, match our existing color palettes and all that?
For parking. This is parking.
To direct, to direct to the public parking, yes. This is, we've got three public parking areas that we would need to direct to.
I, I prefer the banners remain for other things rather than parking, but that's my, that's my. I, I prefer the banners remain for other things rather than parking, but that's my, that's my instinct.
And putting them on lamp post type stuff? And putting them on lamp post type things?
Yeah.
Okay, I've got no problem with that. I think that.
That's a, you don't want them on lamp posts and you're agreeing not to put them on lamp posts.
I prefer the parking signs not be on lamp posts and I think that should be more for, I don't know, something more than just.
And banners and flowers.
How can you, how would they do it? Because I, I kind of like what they're saying, but how would you do it other than putting them on banners and light posts?
Ground-mounted sign.
But can you see, can drivers see them? Well, he, he put his hand here, so I was thinking it was a short sign.
The ones we have now that say public parking at the entrances are.
But those are at the entrances and they're not directional signs?
Yeah, the directional signs would in theory probably be roughly the same size.
You think they'd be effective?
Maybe, for some people.
Your visibility is going to be better if it was on the lamp post.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
That's why I would support it being on lamp post.
I'm just trying to think.
Any other consideration with lamp posts is are our lamp posts currently or any added lamp posts in the right, specifically in the right locations in that we have not evaluated?
Yeah, and I don't know the answer to that, obviously.
But I like, I personally like them on the lamp posts, that's me.
Yeah, I think you're going to drive traffic to where it needs to go. And right now, I don't think we are driving the traffic to our parking, public parking areas. And so that would be the intent.
I would agree.
Well, Jeff, I agree with that, but Pinehurst has been so anti-sign. I'm just trying to think if there's a sign that's appealing but will be effective and not be a nice or.
In terms of a banner or in terms of a?
A sign sign, like some banner.
Our signs look great out here. What are you talking about?
They're pretty signs.
Do you like the one out in front, Village Hall here? It's lovely.
It is, I agree, it's lovely, but can we do lovely signs that are effective that don't cause a lot of site pollution?
Don't clutter, yeah.
Well, that's, again, that's why I was saying.
Let's take a, take a look at it.
All right, so you're interested in signs, all right.
Yes, whether it's the lamp post.
If in the right place, the right size, right appearance and effective.
That's a low-hanging fruit. All right, we, we might have two designs, one for the banner and one without. We've already actually started looking at those. The rest of it on that list is all related again to the things we've already talked about, so I'm not going to rehash those. Other than two-hour parking, and this is where they would suggest if we're going to have two-hour parking to turn cars over. You'd have to put it on the police department.
But they can't mark cars.
We gave you all the reports some time back, there's, you know, there's a fair, there's a substantial cost to it.
Go again.
But otherwise, we stay with the program we have currently, which is asking people to please be considerate.
That, that doesn't work. And so if we really want to get the turnover, we're going to have to, the only tool we have is the timing.
Enforcement.
Is the timing, because we, we can't say, well, some kinds of people can park and others can't. We can't do that.
Well, this is a conversation.
And this is not a decision you have to make today, because that can go, be done at any time. So it's not necessarily germane to the amenity plan. It was just their recommendation in terms of parking. That's one of the things that, that's kind of like, say, Jane, kind of any way you can really turn cars over. So I'm going to go ahead, you, if you guys want to revisit two-hour parking, we could make that a separate topic and you can spend all day long talking about it.
Yeah. I'd like to see a little, have us a little more time with what we've done. I mean, it's all anecdotal, but I have noticed on occasion of people now who I didn't think before were parking in this sandlot. I saw one person today, it surprised me, walked all the way across to the sandlot, who has.
All the way, come on. We just went right across the street to the sandlot.
I'm not defending them. From where their office was, they walked over there and I thought to myself, very interesting, you know? It's what people do when they, when they're not being watched and I, I thought that was interesting.
Did he pack a lunch?
No. I was, I was in the Villager deli and I saw this person go right past the deli.
All right, so I think this is another item of high interest, I believe.
Like it.
This is proposed lighting. What you see on this is all of the orange dots would be new lamp posts, although some of them we would not need. For example, potentially all of these in here since this is not going to be managed in the same way. But there might be a need for more than the one that is currently in this location. These little yellow, purply dots, brown, whatever color it looks like up there, those are all the bollard lights. So you can see kind of a bollard, idea being to lead people from the Pinecrest Inn, the Manor Inn.
The brewery.
All down into town.
Are those, is that the actual design? I don't, I don't like that sign.
It's a bollard light.
Bollards. Aren't there some, that is the actual design?
Yeah, it looks like a lighthouse that kind of goes to the beach instead of here. We could look at a different design if, if you're interested. You like the, you like the lighting concept, though.
Now, do we have the electricity along there to do this?
Well, let me rephrase it. Yes, and some cases we do, some cases we do not. We don't have any power that is ours coming up Magnolia Road. We have some power that goes down Dogwood. We have power on this side of the street on Chinkopin. We already have lamp posts there.
So how do we?
And all the rest of it, we have power too.
So how do we deal with it if we don't have power?
Have to run power, cost involved. Phased approach probably, I mean, I don't, we couldn't go in and do all these at one time anyway, so we would have to come up with some type of phasing. When we added lights, the last go-around, we did them over a three or four-year period. We added three, four, five of them at a time.
Now, how do we now have lights on private property in those alleys?
We don't currently have them anywhere except the one alley that is where the old BB&amp;T building is. We have a agreement with them for two lights that are on the side of that building that are ours. The rest of them do not have any lighting in any of those alleys.
Well, the one you just pointed to, if you move your arrow to the right, there are two more lights.
Right there.
No, up. Now to the right, now to the right. Are those, is that not an alley right there with lights?
We have two lights in here on, I think it's maybe represented by these two, because I think this is the BB&amp;T building and it's on this side of the BB&amp;T building.
Yeah.
They're right there.
So they're proposing more lights in another alley?
They're suggesting on the other alleys that we have lighting. Now, I would suggest that we don't do this until we do something with the whole alley enhancement, which is on the list of enhancements. And it's one of those that I don't think it's, I'd call it like medium priority at best. I think there's a lot of other things that we can do that are on our property that we should do first.
Where do we have bollard lights now?
Nowhere.
Don't.
Thank you.
I was trying to picture, I couldn't remember where they were. But I assume pursuing lighting, at least in some phased approach, is.
Right.
Something you're.
The only reservation I heard, Jeff, from you was we shouldn't do the, on-building lighting until the alleyways are a little more developed as to what we might do.
I think, well, I think the alleys, there's more to the alleys than just us adding the lights. I mean, there's pedestrian easements that are not presently there that we, if we're going to spend money on it, we should get a pedestrian easement on them.
But working with the alleys is on this list of things we're looking at tonight, right? We're going to get to.
Alleys are on the list and they are, it says to get to them when, on the phasing plan, it's like you can do them at any time.
Okay.
But they are on the list.
Okay. Because I think, to me, doing things with the alleys is pretty critical to making the whole core district look better. So let's move through this.
All right.
Around, we've done the lighting and the.
Yeah, and we have, we've already tested, we're testing this right now.
Yeah.
We have one out on Community Road right now as a test, so.
The, the lighting on Chinkopin that goes out towards Ritter, does it go all the way to Ritter? I think it must, but the map doesn't show it quite that way, but it must go to the corner of Ritter where Chinkopin goes off and Barrett starts.
I think about where, I mean, we'd make, you have to make this a field decision, but I think it stops right now, probably about where our parking stops.
Okay, well, that's, that's out.
Which is not quite to Ritter.
Right. But it'll certainly draw people from the resort, from the hotel coming into town. I think they'll, they'll see that well.
I assume you're saying, well, from this side, yes, I'm sorry, on the south side it would. It would go out to the intersection at Ritter, because we actually have a lamp post out there.
Right, there's lamp post.
On the north side, you know, Ritter kind of goes off at an angle and there's a space where we don't have any parking bays, any parking spaces there. So from that side of it, it would stop short of that.
Before you leave the page, what are we testing regarding the lamp and the light modifications?
It's a, this, this is a modular purchase, a unit that we can use with the existing globes and the existing lights that we have. And it does basically what it shows there. It does not allow the light to escape upward. It reflects it down. It has a bunch of reflection inside, on the inside, and so it reflects it back down.
So those, those could be installed, after we analyze this, we can install.
These are retrofitted onto our existing lamps.
Right.
As opposed, if we went to buy the, the types of globes with the cap already on them, it's about $500 apiece. These are about 80 bucks a piece.
I got it. Thanks. Sounds good, a good idea.
Okay, so lighting is a yes. This is primarily dealing with Magnolia Road between Azelia and Chinkopin. It also has a little small section of Chinkopin on the west side of that road, west of Magnolia Road, but on the north side, which is beside Mystic Cottage. Really, all this is talking about is taking out the old concrete tire stops that are used right now to separate sand clay pathway from the parallel parking spaces and creating a narrower but legally wide parallel parking bay and creating a green space and then the sidewalk. So that's kind of the profile. So that's, that's what you're seeing here on this profile.
That's, that's going down past Rose Cottage and all through there? I'm trying to remember which side of the street you're on.
Both sides. Past, yeah, going, once you get out of the commercial district.
That's the wine shop and you're heading back?
Yeah, and you start heading back towards Carolina Vista. Both sides of the road, that's basically redoing the landscaping down through there, but still maintaining parallel parking, but adding a green space between the sand clay pathway and the parallel parking that would actually serve as a drainage well at the same time. It would be a, the way to infiltrate the water. And so this is a profile down below of where the parallel parking spaces are and then this is where there are none. This kind of having a look here. So a little more re-landscaped. It is a, not a, it's a residential section. However, it does serve as parking for downtown.
Right.
As well as some of those homes, visitors for those homes as well. But it is currently, yeah, it needs work.
When we did it, we, we actually, it's only been about six years maybe since the parallel parking was lined. People were parking there before that.
Yeah, we were having, it was all mud, you know, we have mud running in that way and that way, but yeah, it's not, the, the solution there was not the best one.
Residents were not completely happy with the fact we had the parking there, but if we, if we keep the parking, but create the hedge or landscaping and then the walkway. And this is where we have sand clay on the north side of Magnolia and brick on the south side, which was this experiment with the National Park Service.
Right.
Going back about a decade ago.
It's a demonstration project and returning it to that type of a profile would be historically correct. It may not be exactly the width and everything correct, but it, it'd be better representation than it is today.
You know, it says enacting modern drainage best practices, but why is this not part of our stormwater, what we're doing with stormwater right now?
This section, because we are, because we kind of already have addressed it with this, so.
But are we duplicating efforts? Are we addressing a storm?
No, because we, we identified and charged McAdams with coming up with a streetscape plan specific for Magnolia Road. That, this Magnolia Road section to also consider how to manage stormwater runoff. It just so happens this mimics the 1895 drainage pattern, you know? We all know that that's the way it was designed. Water runs off into these swells on the side of the road. We've lost that on Magnolia Road and this is an attempt to at least modify it back to some level that's at least reminiscent, reminiscent of that. We don't have a lot of drainage problems on that section of road. The, the problems we have are the residents don't like the sand clay. It splatters up on the fence when it rains. Some of the sand clay will wash if their, if their ground is below the sand clay pathway, some of the sand clay migrates into their, into their yard. And they, people that are coming to visit them track the sand clay into the house. That's the things I have heard over the years. All, all probably true.
This is a good project. I think this is a good, good project here. I support this.
Yeah. I, I think it's a good thing we should do also.
Where, where does it go on the list? High, medium or medium or depending on cost?
Pretty high.
Yeah. It's not going to be cheap, but it's, it's, you know, I don't, we're not talking, you know, $200,000 or anything.
We're not talking $200,000, okay. Well, we have $200,000 for streetscapes anyway.
I got $200,000 total and so I'm using it on some other things. This might be one that we would have to consider a specific budget item for NFY24. But we just need to look at it in terms of, at least I know that it is, it is higher on your list, so I can, I can then try to start putting some numbers to it. Because it's going to come in time like we've always done with everything else. When it comes to capital, we want all these things, but then we go, that's going to cost this much and we have this much. And so then we have to start saying, okay, let's program them in over the years. This will be the similar thing, I think. Okay. You don't really need to worry about the road improvements. This proposed planting, just know there's a statement, as I mentioned earlier, we have the planting plan in process and it's, our communication committee is involved in reviewing it and providing comment back, and so that's still in process. But we are following the general principles that they have listed here as far as the development of those plans.
You know, speaking of plantings, and they said, and it was at the, one of the things at the top of their list, about removing dead trees or diseased trees or.
And I didn't even address that because we do that on an ongoing basis, kind of as it is, but when we replant, we just need to be strategic about.
Timing.
Timing is one thing, but also where are we, where we replant a, the next tree that is replacing the dead tree and/or the next tree that is going to be the next generation before the next tree dies, so. And there's some guidance in here about sort of spacing and those kinds of things.
Okay.
And we have, we're fortunate, we have two certified arborists on our staff too that are pretty well-versed. Okay, I'm going to leave this if we're okay. I think I've got at least some general ideas of what, what we want to start pursuing with the funds that we currently have available. With the understanding that we need to flesh out some costs of a couple of other things as well. And there may be a time where I come back to you and say, here's kind of the batting order of what we're thinking based on what you told me tonight. Is this correct? Do you want to make an adjustment? You want to move this one above that one and move that one down, et cetera? And then we'll put our foot on the gas and go with it.
Perfect.
Okay, I mentioned intersection plans. The four-way always stop at Chinkopin and Magnolia Road. I'm going to show you the radical version here first, which is a small roundabout in that intersection. And if that's not appealing, here's kind of a new configuration that would be an always stop. We're going to have to create someplace to put stop signs, so that's why you see this new planting area sort of jutting out. It may not necessitate us taking in that parking space. We might cut that a little short. But we do have to do some slight realignment in order to make this all work, but it is doable. It fits within the existing right-of-way and so.
Four stop signs is what you're saying?
It would be an always stop. Yeah, so cars that are coming down Barrett, from Barrett on Chinkopin here would stop. This is the primary, that's the primary issue I understand, is the speeds this, this direction.
Now, the first figure you showed us was with the, the roundabout, right?
Yep.
Now that, wouldn't that be difficult for trucks?
Yeah, I don't see that happening.
Exactly.
I mean, I've, I've seen some trucks that, I don't know how they get around a roundabout.
DOT has built one of these in Oxford, this same size. Now, what we had to do with the one at Carolina Vista, our DOT actually did it, but we were in consult with them. This outer ring that you see here is a ramp up where trucks can actually go up on top of that. And so if you look at the one out there at Carolina Vista, that initial outside 10, 12 feet is actually inlaid concrete block. And so they can jump up on that and go across it and it doesn't do anything. And then there, the interior is where. And then there, the interior is where the landscaping is placed. Now, occasionally, you still get some really bad driver that will cut through there, but, but that's what that extra circle is on the outer edge.
Those stop signs involved with that?
No, just to be a roundabout.
Traffic flow.
Right.
The yield, there would be yield, you have to have a yield sign, I think, going into the, to the roundabout. So it wouldn't, so there'd be that signage. I just think that's too tight. I'd like, I, it's a great idea, but I just, for that place, I'm afraid it's too tight.
Radical for the problem.
It might get to Jeff Sanborn's idea of having a circular all the way around, though.
You could put a big statue in the middle of that thing.
Right.
Pointing northward or whatever.
Batting statue.
Four, four stop signs is going to be a lot cheaper, too. I think a four-way stop is going to be.
It's a two-way stop already, so we're just putting stop signs at the end.
Good point.
It's not just that, though. You've got to, we do have to, we have to create a place to put the stop sign where it doesn't appear. You can't, you know, we can't, we, there's nowhere to put it unless you just stick it in the middle of the asphalt. Obviously, that's not working.
Not going to do that.
And so that's why there's a little bit of some reconfiguration. And then this stop bar really kind of needs to pull forward from where it is now, because it's a blind looking back that way. Looking back up Chinkapin towards Barrett, towards the, towards the spa.
Part where you just had your cursor there? I've had a couple of comments about us having a no parking sign on that side of the street. That sometimes you'll get a, a truck, a delivery truck, where across the street, it says loading zone. But for whatever reason, they want to be pointed the other way when they leave, so they park on that side of the street. And that causes a problem for the cars coming around that truck, because they got, they have cars coming at them, and it also, depending on how far up the delivery truck is, it crowds out their view as they get into the intersection a little. So I know we'd make a, a few people happy, and I think it makes sense. I mean, I, I, the only reason I'm sort of really passing it on is I think it seems like a logical place to tell people, don't park there. There's, there's elsewhere to go. Okay. I, I, I'm with you on the, the four-way stop. I mean, I don't know what else. Beats a traffic light.
Yeah, we don't want to, we don't need a light. Roundabout doesn't work.
And that, that reminds me a little too much of Europe.
Jeff, we had some blind intersections in Pineville, and all we did was move the stop sign up, took care of it. It's so simple.
Jeff, I think, too, in a concept like this that you and I discussed some months ago, bringing that stop sign out into Chinkapin by Magnolia Place, there's going to be a crosswalk there, and would that, wouldn't that be, the sidewalk would come out, and would we have any landscaping in that little sidewalk, or is it just going to be straight to the street, probably?
No, I, I was just, I would envision it looking more like what's across the street over here, when you come out of this, enter this crosswalk. There's a little chute there, and there's, there's landscaping.
Oh, that'd be nice, yeah.
I would envision it being something similar to that. So you've got landscape, you know?
This is something I.
Has to be in here.
Yeah, this is something I think we should have done long ago, but this, this would be good.
It's also a speeding issue, and it'll actually improve a little bit of the landscaping.
Right. And I don't think it's going to be that costly, so I'd, that'd be very high on my list of things to do.
Okay. Got it. Any questions for me? I think I sort of wrote down enough notes to kind of get a general idea of where we're sort of heading.
Good job navigating.
Sort of in the same topic area, the combination of what you've mentioned in the past, of stormwater and resurfacing and how we do that, what, what more can you, put a little more meat on that bone? Let me know how that works and what you're thinking about.
So, so right now, we, obviously, as part of the Stormwater Master Plan, we have our consultants engaged on a number of what we consider significant problem areas. Downtown is one of them. And if we're going to address that, and, and as I stated, I think at the beginning of our topic here, we've got three potential alternate plans right now to address. The biggest problem we have is right across the face here. We have a little bit of a problem down here on the, at Market Square, but the bigger problem is, is on Chinkapin.
By the wine shop and whole.
By the wine shop, exactly. And it really can extend all the way down to Drum and Quill, and that water then turns down this alley and continues on. But anyway, we've got three alternate plans. They're currently, and we discussed another concept plan today that they're going to flesh out and see if that works. We think that actually, the fourth alternate may make the most sense that would allow us to address. But if we're going to be digging up and putting pipes in the ground, we want to do that, obviously, before we pave. We don't want to pave and then come back and cut the road, so that's, that's kind of what we're.
From a timing standpoint, you see that being able to all happen pre-open?
Yes, that'd be our certain area game plan, to get the drainage in the ground, whatever potential modifications are made there, resurface the road, restripe everything. Some of these other things may need to come into play at the same time. For example, if we're going to add the seven parking spaces to the west side of the theater building, it would naturally need to be done at the time that we're going to pave. Same thing potentially, not really as much here, but we wouldn't want to, we don't need to waste, you know, a hundred bucks on asphalt here if we're just going to turn around and cut it back out. So, you know, just little things like that.
Does the creation of those parking spaces there, I guess that's Cherokee, right, by, by Lisi, will, will that have any impact on the need we have to purchase those parking spots in the lot?
Yeah, we currently lease 14 parking spaces. I would assume we would continue to lease those, but the parking directional signage that we currently don't have, that would be one of the locations that we would want to potentially direct some vehicles to. Now, I think most, by and large, that's being used by people working and who know exactly, which is good.
It's just funny. It's not, it's not.
I, I would envision us continuing to, to have those.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. All right. I'm done.
Well, what about alleys? If not tonight, next night?
What, what do you want to do with them?
Clean them all up, get the trashcans out, paint the walls, make them look good. I'm talking alleys that are private as well as those that are coming, you know, through the, through the buildings connecting the street.
They're, they're all private.
I, I thought, he just commented before that we have to get the easements. We have to give pedestrian easements.
I would recommend you do.
Yeah, before we start putting money into it, we need pedestrian easements.
Our discussion.
I don't disagree that alleys are, you know, can be enhanced. There's certainly, and it's doable, but I, I would suggest that, you know, before we, we make sure we've got pedestrian easements in place.
I think that's very logical.
You know what I like, moving forward on this at some point? Put a, get a map that we can show where all the alleys are, the little ones, the big ones, the ones we're using now, just so we know where all the kind of alleys are, and then we can look at, you know, what might be done with some, but not with others, would we have to, you know, get easements, this sort of thing.
Yeah. There's some challenges in that, in some of the alleys. I mean, we, we can spruce them up, clean them up, make them look a little better, but in terms of like a lot of landscaping, you know, you don't get any sunlight down into those alleys.
Right.
But there's some plant materials that you can use that might enhance it, it'll make it at least a little more inviting. You also can use lighting to make it more inviting. There's even some small pedestrian-sized wayfinding, even that would direct people in between there, so they know it's, it's okay to enter that alley and, and go over to the other block. The rest of us who live here know that, but some of the others may not, some other folks may not, but, yeah.
Some of the alley discussion would get into the.
If you want me to put that ahead of something else, that would be a discussion that we would have. But as I said before, I think it would behoove us to, now that I've sort of got some direction of what we don't want to even get involved in, what we might, starting to throw some dollar figures on some of those things and say, okay, guys, you're going to have to, y'all are going to have to potentially make some choices.
What would you, what would your timeframe now be, Jeff, for the?
It'll take me a little bit of time to, to get some numbers thrown together. I would think, I'm going to continue on some of that low-hanging stuff that doesn't necessitate really. I think you all got, you guys want me to pursue the, like, the, the refresh of all the landscape bids, and I think that's a high priority. Once we have our plans done, I would envision that we're going to be going ahead and moving forward on that while we may be fleshing out some of this other stuff. So it may be February before we have reasonable enough numbers that we can come back and say, okay, here's what it's going to cost, and here's kind of the suggested batting order for some of these other items.
Yeah. You, well, whatever list you prepare, then we could put it in a priority order, depending on cost and everything else. But you've got some idea already.
Your high, medium, low at least tells me kind of how I should at least move the ones that say high, move them towards the higher, higher part of the list on down the line. One thing we didn't talk about is alleys. I don't know what priority you place on those. I know, I think you place a, a higher one. I wouldn't invest, you know, anything until we know for sure we could secure pedestrian easements. We, so, we tried to get one before, and it was $7,000 a year.
The easement language would have to also protect the investment we put in it.
Right.
In terms of being able to maintain it and whatever we put in it, yeah.
Right, you'd have to have pedestrian access, yeah. Right, maintenance easement.
You have to think about insurance, too, because once we have an easement, anybody trips and falls, or, you know, then it's on us.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I say, if we touch it, we're going to own it, right? So if we're going to go in there and, and take on that responsibility, we want to make sure that the investment is protected long-term for the availability of the public to use them as pedestrian walkways.
Might be easier to give a grant, so the landlord could fix it up.
Happy to have a discussion. We're not going to make any decisions right now, I don't think, so.
Might be easier, but you're, you're not, that's a, that's an investment that's not protected.
Correct.
True.
Jeff, some of the landscaping issues or, or ideas, you know, get into planning season issues, so, or restrictions. Why, I, I don't see anything being able to be done in this winter season, unless I'm misinterpreting what you're able to do. But would we be in a position to be planting in the spring on some of these things that don't, that don't fall behind?
I think, I think the spring is more realistic for two reasons. One is we won't have a final plan until probably another, after the first of January.
Yeah.
And then going out to bid, getting contractor lined up to do it all. I think by the time you get all that stuff, we're, we're into March, probably, anyway. Maybe even April.
That's at least a framework for, at least how a portion of this work would move. Planting sometime in the spring of '23, as long as they're not going to be dug up by resurfacing in the fall of '23.
Yeah, I, I don't think, you know, our planting shouldn't be impacted by any road resurfacing or that kind of thing.
All right.
But we need to give it some thought on, on sequencing some of this stuff.
And perhaps in February, whatever list you have and the cost basis, we would be able to prioritize them for you, as I guess I said, so, okay. Does that work for council? Is that, is that a good way forward? Good timeframe? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
If there are no other questions on that, shall we move to our final project, which you're going to talk to us about, too? Road map.
I'm not sure how long it's going to take, but if we can have a five-minute break before it, it'd be good. It's going to be a long conversation.
8:03. We'll continue on with the subject of, uh, speed and roads in the core area of Pinehurst.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kick off just as an introduction and I'll turn it over to Jeff. This all originated from a, a letter we received from residents of Page Road back in the summer, um, I believe it was. And there was several requests on there, one of which was about lowering the speed limit. And we forwarded, as we would normally do, that information to NC DOT, uh, being the road is theirs. Their DOT engineers, um, reevaluated, uh, their speed data, which was older, 2016, but they did some spot checks on that. Uh, and their, um, indication was there was no engineering reason to lower the speed limit on Page Road. Uh, we shared that, of course, with the Page Road residents, um, and they, I guess, pursued it further with DOT from the standpoint that, uh, one of the board members, DOT board members and the division engineer, uh, discussed that particular, uh, Page Road question, um, and came back to the village that if we would enforce the speed limits and, uh, made the request ourselves versus the residents, that we, uh, they would consider lowering So, instead of looking at just Page Road, um, if we are going to go to DOT with any type of request, felt it was prudent to look at the speed limits of DOT roads across the village and see if there's anything that you would want to consider adding to any request if you so desire or so choose to make this request to begin with. Um, we thought it'd be just, it makes more sense to look at this on a broader, uh, scale across the organism, across the villages, as opposed to just looking at a one-off situation at Page Road. Not to say that any one or any of the others, you could, obviously, it's going to be your choice of what you would like for, or what you want to direct us to try to do in terms of making any request or not request.
Do we have any other requests from residents on anywhere else?
We have no requests from anywhere currently on any of these other roads. Um, we have in past, as the village, uh, at the direction of council, previous councils, requested that, uh, Linden Road's speed limit, uh, be extended beyond where it currently ends at Chicken Plant, uh, to include out to Foxfire Road, uh, and that was rejected. We have also requested that Highway 211, where it is 55 from Main Street, um, where you go into Harris Teeter all the way to Rattlesnake Trail, be dropped to 45 miles per hour, and that was also rejected. We've made that request maybe twice. The Linden Road request has probably been made two or three different times.
We wanted, we were thinking of going from 35 to something less?
Right now, it, where you, where you see the line stop, it's 35 there and then it switches to 45 and goes, continues.
Oh, that way is going 45?
Continues out, that's right. So, these, these, these lines obviously stop at basically, basically the city limits. But once you get outside of city limits, it goes to 45, but we have Cotswold out there, which is in our city limits, and, um, Holly Crest is not in our city limits. It's in our ETJ.
Right.
Um, but at this juncture, DOT has declined to, had, had declined, or we should say, to lower the speed limit beyond Chicken Plant Road essentially by Elliot's.
Yes, that.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Kelly.
Well, it might not be time to ask this now, but in the conversation, I'd love to know what their criteria are, because we, we, you know.
We're going to show you, uh, a long, in a few minutes, a, um, their, their study. Uh, it's a one-page and it, it'll, it'll show you the different criteria.
Their criteria, okay.
Now, there may be others beyond that. It's right there, so they got, you know.
Can you pull it up, Kelly? I lost my pointer, I guess, because Kelly's.
You got it.
This column, the, the right column is the previous study, and that was in '16. Uh, and then the updated study they did this year is in the left-hand column.
Oh, I see.
Well, they actually do a study. I, I mean, I didn't realize, all I've ever heard is we talked to DOT and DOT said no. And I never saw anything like this where there is a documented study.
This is the summary sheet of the study. And they put the additional column on it for us for the spot study they did, um, October 5th.
But, I mean, you can look at the data and see that in that six years' time between '16 and '22, at least based on what they measured on these days, it hasn't gotten worse. It's been a relatively static situation, both with regard to speeds and with regard to, regarding volumes. Actually, they measured a little lower volume in 2022 for some reason. They also have some data down here about accident history. Um, you see total act, number of accidents, zero, which means zero of them are speed-related, no DUI-related, so there's, there's.
This is a snapshot in time of a particular week or how, is that, how's it work?
Yes, it's historical data. It's not.
On the October 22?
This is.
So, the accident data is, uh, I think they go back five years. The other data is the snapshot for a window of time for the 2016 study.
This stuff is all, oh, this is.
And then, so you can see it was done through April 6th through April 8th.
Right, and the one, the more recent one was October 24th through 26th. I, too, was surprised on the volume issue. That's the only, no, I, I just can't, I mean, between, we're talking about a six-year differential. We've had plenty of growth in the area and that one doesn't, particularly in the hospitals. So, I mean, I don't.
Yeah.
There's something, scanner into.
The, the data is what it is.
Yep.
You know, we don't have any other data to go by, so.
No, I'm not questioning it, it's just sort of interesting.
Can I make one, uh, additional observation that's completely off-subject on this, but if you go to roadway data, Jeff, scroll down just a little bit, pavement width of Page Road, 20 feet, 10 inches, lane width, eight feet, eight inches. We were just talking about Chinkopin being 14 and a half feet.
Mm-hmm.
On each travel lane.
A highway with, with 35 mile per hour speed limits.
Right.
Just to help.
Need all that.
Perspective when you're talking about downtown and whether you widen the sidewalks and those things. Okay, so go back, go ahead.
Yeah.
I'll shut up.
I don't remember where I was now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We were past the accident data.
And account data.
You showed there was no data.
Accident data, yeah, the accident data is, is five-year snapshot, if I'm not mistaken, and the other things are, you know, that window of time.
Right, now, there was, um, you know, there, there was also this, an observation that was made by Pat Milanthe when he received a request from residents, was a question about whether or not DOT had properly categorized this section of road, because it's.
Rural.
The category it, it falls under is labeled rural. Now, that's a curious label, but it's not the label that matters, it, it's the actual data that matters. So, um, the road is classified correctly, it's just got a odd, that, that classification has a very odd.
It's part of the development rate.
Naming convention, that, it's just, it's just.
It's a development rate.
That's right.
So, it, development rate 30%. Does that mean 30% of that stretch has developed?
No, it has to do with the number of driveways and intersections per 100 feet.
Okay.
Not a, it's not based on 30% of the lots are built upon.
So, it doesn't look rural, and that should be no surprise to any of us, but it's just a funny way the, their naming convention is odd. Um, it is classified correctly. Uh, right, so Jeff made the, the point earlier that it, it was, we thought it was important for you to kind of broaden your, your scope here a little bit, and instead of dealing with the one-off, um, take a look at the village-wide situation to the degree possible, uh, and to the extent possible, take the opportunity to treat light situations in a similar way. So, if you go, if we go back to the speed map, which is, is it this one? This one, yeah. You can see all the, all this stuff that's colored yellow is what, is currently has a 35 mile per hour speed limit, right? So, what, what you're going to see here in a, in a bit is some selected segments of these yellow roads that we think look, oh, kind of like Page Road, in terms of development density and, you know, other characteristics, residential, uh, and, and, you know, that, that might help you understand, um, the situation so that you can give us the right guidance going forward.
It's sort of a coloring of the map, makes you wonder about, uh, adding anything else into, uh, the discussion. I mean, I just listened to the discussion about Linden Road, which, and I've heard some people say about that, mention the speed limit there in the past, but I now understand when, when they're talking about Linden Road, they're talking about it beyond Chicken Plant.
Out here, right here, yeah.
Yeah, okay, as opposed to, uh, uh, going past the pine wild entrance gates and all.
It's not really in the village limits.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
Well, especially when Cotsw, you know, um, Holly Crest, that development came forward, and one, and I think the, the people who live out there said with that many homes being added, could the speed limit be lowered to 45? And I don't know if that was part of the discussion with DOT, if all those homes in Holly Crest are going to make a difference, but right now.
I have asked that question specifically, and the answer was maybe.
Talked to us then.
So, maybe, yeah, right, I was going to just say, let's wait till it's developed and we revisit it.
Assess maybe, yeah.
That's a good, that's a good, uh, time to do it, man. The, the, the odd thing about the, the Page Road is that little green stripe.
In front of the hospital.
Hospital district.
Hospital.
20 miles an hour.
Because of all that pedestrian traffic going back and forth across it.
Uh, I asked DOT, um, a follow-up question about that specifically, that transition from 35 to a 20. It's not uncommon. Uh, it happens in Southern Pines, actually, on Broad Street, Midland Road coming into Broad.
Yeah.
From the Pinehurst to Southern Pines section.
Ah.
Uh, I know, um, of places, you know, at least one, where it goes from 55 to 35 down towards Roland, just happened to go that way.
Between West End and, and Southern Lakes, I suppose, right?
55 to 35, yeah, exactly. So, that, that transition between a higher, a much higher speed and a lower speed is not uncommon.
Well, if you're looking at the roads, they're pretty much arteries that go into, uh, in and out of our, um, village. Um, the 20 mile an hour by the hospital, I certainly understand that because that's by the hospital and you have people walking back and forth between the different offices, um, uh, just in, in daily business, so that does make sense to me. From the data that you showed, there's no increase in the volume, there's no increase in the speed, there's no accidents that are occurring. I understand that may be a desire, but there's lots of people who end up using that road. Went from this thing, looks like for two days, about 4,000, you know, 400 people use that. Um, and there are arteries going in and out of the town. Um, it's not in super residential, we have curved roads and everything else, and, and we still have to have those arteries. I, I don't see any reason to change any of the speed limits that we have at this point in time from what I'm seeing here. Um, and I, and I think we should maintain those speeds.
Yeah, one of the, you know, I, I sympathize with, to a great deal with the folks on Page Road, because they're not just dealing with what would typically be on Page Road. We have a whole bunch of folks that are using Page Road to avoid the traffic circle.
That's the issue.
And I suspect that it's those po, folks that are speeding, now, they're doing it apparently safely, because we don't have any accident history, but, so.
And it's also 30, 38 miles an hour.
I'm sorry.
It's also 39 miles an hour, 38. It's not like they're speeding at 55, okay?
Um, so, there's that, uh.
Jeff, I mean, your claim, the claim that it's being used as a cut-through, but the data doesn't show that there's increased traffic, unless.
They've always been using it to.
Yeah, but that, there's not, there's not increased traffic according to.
Yeah, they're not using it any more than they were previously, I guess, but.
The purpose remains the same.
I'm not sure about that, Jeff. I, I think since 211 was expanded, um, Page Road has been used a lot more.
Well, so is that, but the data was comparing 16 to 22 and 16 was after it was expanded, so you might be right. I, it's hard to.
And, and, and this section of Page Road is a residential, goes through a residential area, whereas some of the other roads are, are not.
Thank you for that transition for me.
Okay.
So, I mentioned that we, we, we took a look at, are there, are there other segments of these yellow-colored roads that look a lot like Page Road, right?
London.
Uh, and we pulled out four of them, so, and all of these segments, you're going to see in a table later on, are relatively about the same length, they're all residentially developed. Um, you're going to see that some of them have a little higher density development than Page Road does, but, um, so that's the segment of Page Road, I think everybody is familiar with that.
It's between the two red lines.
But, thank you, John, yeah. So, if you think, well, that's, you know, gate to gate right there.
Mm-hmm.
It's depicted by the red lines. And then if you look at this section of Morganton Road, from the Monticello intersection to the western boundary of CCNC.
Mm-hmm.
About, a little bit longer, or maybe this one is shorter, I don't recall, but, about in the same neighborhood in terms of length, and you see it's all residentially developed on both sides of the road. And there's actually two, two sections on Linden Road that go end to end, but I divided them up in two because each one of those two sections is roughly about the same length as, as the, uh, Page Road segment, and it makes you, it makes it easier to.
Yeah.
See the similarities in data, so. Uh, so from Linden, this is, this is, uh, I'm sorry, on Linden Road, from Highway 5 to St. Andrews is the first one. And then the second one is from St. Andrews out here to, this is a little bit short of the Pine Wild Gate. Kind of an arbitrary place where I drew the, drew the line, but that's where the, the development density kind of dropped off, so, um, and it's, you know, it's about the right length as well.
Hmm.
And so, here's some data about those four different segments of road, and they're organized from left to right in increasing length. And so, you see, for Morganton, uh, it's about 1,800 feet, and if, if you, as you progress to the right, the longest stretch is Linden from west, Linden on the west side of St. Andrews, which is a little less than 2,500 feet. You can see the number of lots, skip down two lines, the number of homes, skip down two lines, the number of driveway cuts, and then skip down two lines, the number of intersections. And then what I did to try to normalize this data so that you can actually make comparisons, even though they are roughly the same length of road segment, was I divided the length by each one of those numbers, right? So, you get a number of feet per lot, number of feet per home, or per home, uh, number of feet per driveway cut, right, and a number of feet per intersection. And then you can see that color-coded data there, and, you know, I use the color coding just so that it would pop to you that there's, there are differences. I'm not trying to say that red is bad and green is good. Those are kind of value judgments, I don't, you know, I don't know. What's the line between bad and good is, we don't know. Um, but you, you can see that if you take a look at these four road segments, at, at least to me, it would seem that any perception that based on development density, we ought to be considering a change to speed limit, it, it would seem that Morganton Road has the most compelling case, and it would seem that, seem that Page Road has the least compelling case. So, just food for thought. Um, and all this stuff about development density, it's, it's, you know, this notion of the development density was something that we heard from the residents. They're concerned that, you know, we have all these homes and driveway cuts and it's the appropriate, the speed limit's not appropriate. And, and, you know, what they're really concerned about and what they're, you know, what they're, what they're relating to with regard to development density is, it's not the actual density, it's safety, right? This is a proxy for potential safety challenges, you know? More driveway cuts, more points of conflict, more pot, more homes, more potential for kids out and bicycles and crossing the road, and, you know, so, it's all about safety. And so, this is, this is an indicator of what this, how this might stack up in terms of perceived safety. And then we also have data, and we saw some data on that previous traffic study account for, um, Page Road. We have some other data, and I apologize, I didn't have it included, time to include it here, uh, for you, but NC DOT has some nice interactive GIS layer stuff available And what I found by, um, analyzing that a little, little bit of detail this afternoon is that, one, one of the things that they map out is, um, numbers of, um, serious injuries or, and fatalities. And if you go back over the last 10 years, there are zero on Page Road, actually zero on Morganton Road.
On that stretch?
On the, on that stretch, you're right, yes.
Right, because we did have that fatality.
We had the other fatality that was, it's mapped properly on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the golf cart. Uh, and Linden from 5 to St. Andrews actually has three, and then on the west side, there, there are zero as well. So, there's not a lot of accident history on all four of these, but where it's concentrated is in this section of Linden. history on all four of these, but where it's concentrated is in this section of Linden. Could, you know, it's kind of small numbers, so it could just be a statistical anomaly thing, but we don't know. Another thing, another nice useful map that I, I think that it was helpful to look at was they mapped this thing called, um, I think they called it a safety index. And it's, that safety index is a mathematical calculation that takes into account, um, numbers of accidents, severity of accidents, and then something that they called critical acci- accident ratio with, which quite honestly, I don't understand. I, based on the description of it, I, I can't make sense of it. But the point is, they're trying to aggregate three different ways of looking at accident history and safety. And they, 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 they weigh them all equally, you know, it's all one-third, 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 and they combine it and come up with this ratio. It's called, it's called a, um, what do I call it? Safety. You lost me. Ratio fa- factor or something.
That's a DOT thing?
It's a DOT thing.
Safety index or something, you said.
Um, and when you look at that map, so you can look at all the DOT, DOT roads in the village of Pinehurst. And just a disclaimer, some of those roads aren't actually, they don't have data, complete data for, so they're not rated. Like, for whatever reason, Highway two isn't rated. Airport Road isn't rated. Those are the two that, that I specifically recall. Um, the rest of them are all rated. Only one road, one DOT road in the village of Pinehurst limits is rated as green or good. Any guesses which one? Page Road.
What are, what are the bad ones? What are, what are the bad ones? You know, do you remember the ranking? I mean.
Yeah. Uh, so Page was green. The two Linden Road sections that are up here were yellow. Morganton was red. So, which is kind of in line with what this says. So, all that to say that, you know, we have this request from residents that are very passionate about their perceptions of safety on Page Road. Um, maybe, you know, I think certainly the, the actual accident history doesn't bear that out. We don't see an increase that, in speeds and traffic volumes that might suggest that we're headed down a path towards something worse. And i- i- if you think that it might be appropriate to change the speed limit on Page Road, you probably ought to be considering these other ones as, as well.
And the Sandborn Index, which I'll call this, met up with the safety inde- index of the DOT with the same sort of rankings, from what I heard you say.
Yeah. Sa- Safety Index.
Safety, whatever you call it.
Right.
I'll call this a Sandborn Index, Sandborn Report. Very well done, Jeff. I mean, it's.
Have you learned a lot through this?
Sorry?
Have you learned a lot through this? Through this exercise? And I ask that because I, I only was interested in the study map, the study chart.
Yeah.
But you've given us so much more information that I didn't realize was out there. And I'm wondering if you have learned through this process? By doing this, by looking at the safety index, by?
Yeah. Well, you know, I think, you know, when I, when I first heard the concerns from residents about the development density on the road.
Mm-hmm.
My first inclination was, yeah, they might have a point. Um, you know, maybe Linden, maybe Page Road really is kind of unique and special in terms of the, the density of residential development. But then I, you know, a couple of days later, I was pulling up the GIS and looking at it. I, I started scratching my head and I said, I don't know, maybe not, you know, so.
No, Morganton right now is almost every lot on Morganton Road.
Yeah.
Coming in.
They're all, they're almost all full now.
They're all under, under construction.
A couple more under construction as well.
So from a density, it would be there.
Yeah.
Um, I am surprised. Um, I, so, all right, so why don't we reduce the speed limit on all four roads?
Tch.
You could. Or you can make that request.
But on what basis? Because from what Jeff is saying, there really isn't a problem on any of, on these four roads.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I've said that.
Yeah, if there, if there's a case to be made, it's here, I think. I, I'll say that, and then I'll, I'll tell you this. There's another section, I, I've mentioned that the, the Safety Index on this stretch of Morganton Road is red.
Yeah.
There's another one that's red.
Aren't y'all?
The other stretch.
Road. It's, that one right there.
Oh, the, the, that's Linden Road going.
Yeah. Probably because that kid was, you know, kind of bicycle instructor, I don't know.
Front of Elliot, yeah.
And they are not entertaining that request.
Yes, the way I look at is the, it's two things. One, I think the most compelling argument for Page, the Page Road request, uh, is that they're, they're the only people who have asked for this, in my mind. The other roads, where you make a good argument.
Linden Road, really all of Linden Road.
We don't, we don't have a, I don't know, okay, I haven't seen a, I haven't had a petition where people called visiting me about Linden, but I'm not saying it's, um, and the other thing is, is that since there isn't any current request from anywhere else, uh, if we can make the request for Page Road and we are successful, we will then be in a position, I believe, to come back for the next request where the data is even better to reduce the speed limit. And that may be when further out Linden, when we, when Holly Crest is up and running. And, uh, so anyway, those are my two arguments.
Could be that there, that DOT has only receptive to Page Road because of personalities that are involved.
Okay.
I prefer to stick with the data.
And we wind up, you know, stuck with this imbalance of not.
If I, if I could make one other observation, um, just to insert another thought. Morganton Road is the one that appears to be the most likely one that should have a speed limit reduced, if at all. But it's also the one that would be the most impactful on the most residents in that it would likely divert more traffic onto Monticello because it is no longer faster to go up Morganton to Highway five. If you.
This is east of.
Well, but wouldn't we?
Impact that.
No. Uh, what I'm saying is the, to go from Highway five to Morganton Road on Monticello is twenty-five miles an hour with two stop signs. If you dropped Morganton Road to twenty-five, you could encourage more traffic to cut through Monticello.
We're, we're only talking about.
Which is what we don't want to have happen.
Only talking about the section of Morganton Road east of Monticello.
Well, wouldn't we, Jeff, or wouldn't we do the whole, wouldn't we do the whole Morganton Road, uh, to, to the same limit from Highway five to fifteen-five oh one? You're suggesting would only reduce the speed in one section.
Based on, you know, this comparative analysis, there, there's not near as much development des- density east, west of.
Monticello, yeah, because you get into Highway.
And those roads don't actually have driveway cuts.
Yeah, much, much fewer driveway cuts.
That's true.
You're right.
That's true. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Well, Pinehurst residents are, across the board, concerned with speed. I mean, all, we always get questions about speed. They don't, and the actual speed limits that people are going don't always add up to be, uh, a real problem. But people are always concerned about speed. So, you know, one route here might be to put all four of these sections in to reduce the speed limit. Probably the DOT would, would not honor a couple of these. It might honor Morganton Road, but at least we've accomplished it there. Maybe that leads to other considerations in the future.
Who are these people that are concerned about?
Saying the other thing is, we don't do anything, um, because it doesn't appear to be, you know, from a data-driven point of view, it doesn't appear to be a problem. Um, and maybe that's.
Suggest point.
I'm sorry, Jeff?
This is, you know, this is probably not going to be a popular opinion in this crowd, but.
Yeah.
You are only hearing from the people that are.
Right.
Don't like speeds. There's a whole bunch of folks out there that are perfectly comfortable with it. And they all have to drive on these roads.
And there's a lot of people who go to work on these roads. Because when you're living in all those curly roads in there.
Yeah.
All over the place.
Yeah.
You end up getting on these roads. I get on them every morning when I go to work. And I don't want to see that the speeds decrease as I'm trying to get to work and I'm just moving there. I'm, I'm moving at a safe speed. I'm, I'm going to go.
So to that point, this is, this is the problem I've tried to articulate. This is a hard, a hard concept to articulate, so please bear with me. When you, let me, let me start, start the, there's a lot of scientifically assessed data out there that engineering, uh, transportation and traffic engineering folks rely on, that says that the overwhelming majority of people have enough sense to know what the safe speed is on any given road that they're driving. And it's borne out by the actual accident history. They know what's safe.
Flip around here.
And they're, no, and they're driving it, right? What we have is a system, a systematic, um, speed limit framework that is always below what is actually the safe driving speed. And that's why you have all these people that are still driving over the speed limit. Because it's still safe, and they know it's safe. When, when you take a look at, when you react to the people that are complaining about speeds on their road, and there's no other engineering-related argument for changing the speed, you can have the unintended consequence of making the situation worse. And it goes like this. Let's say you, you drop the speed limit on Page from thirty-five to twenty-five. All those people that were driving forty before are gonna keep doing it. And they're gonna be madder when they're doing it. And because they're madder and they're, and you're creating angry drivers, they're gonna have more accidents. And now that you've changed the speed limit to twenty-five, the residents that were complaining before now assume that because it's posted twenty-five, now that's the safe speed, right? And now they're reacting to people that are exceeding the speed li- limit by even more, and they're angrier, and they're complaining louder. John's shaking his head. He's not following me, but.
No, you, you've, you've had this concept in your mind for quite a long time. Because you've studied this very much. Eight, seven years worth.
That's why engineering, that's why, that's why transportation engineers rely on the engineering data. And that's why we get the answers that says there's no engineering justification for dropping the speed limit. And because when you drop speed limits that aren't justified, you make more people angry.
But Jeff, not only do you have the engineering data, you have all of the other analysis that you did that supported the engineering data. I mean, I don't know how much more data we need to say that that's the appropriate speed limit. And add to that everything you just said.
Now, I, I've said my piece. You all, you all have to make the decision, but.
Well, why do you think that, why do you believe the scenario you just explained? With respect to lowering the speed and getting more problems from it? What, what data supports that?
I'll have, I'll have to go back and find the studies that have been done. But there have been studies.
But there were studies on that subject?
Yeah.
That you've had seen. Okay.
Yeah. Anecdotally, I'll, you know, every once in a while, I, I roll through a, a town in Nowheresville on a highway on a long trip or whatever, and I ask myself, why is this speed limit what it is? And then I'm going, and I'm going, and I'm going. And it does. It makes, makes me, Jeff made the same point. It kind of makes you angry, right? And when you have angry drivers out there, they, they get aggressive and they make mistakes and they cause accidents.
Going on Highway two, um, towards Southern Pines, that was a route I typically used when I'd go back through the back part of Fort Bragg. They dropped the speed limit from forty-five to thirty-five. Um, I don't notice that people are really going that much slower when I ride on that road. Um, a lot of them are still going fifty-five, uh, fifty in that zone, uh, on that road. Um, and I've seen other drivers, you know, they, you know, calm down, you know, go slower, that kind of stuff. And, and anecdotally, kind of what Jeff was talking about, you end up having actually drivers commenting or making gestures to other drivers that are on there. Um, I certainly see more people pulled over, you know, when, when you, when you have the police that are, that are monitoring it, both for the Pinehurst Police as well as Southern Pines Police. Um, so I, I agree with the logic of everything that Jeff has just talked about there. I also think that there's a big ripple effect, okay? Just because you are hearing from the people who don't want speed limits of thirty-five or fifty-five or forty-five that are there, you're not hearing from the people that are perfectly happy for what the speeds are. And I think you have a vast majority of our population that are happy with what it is because right now you don't have a lot of people saying, lower the speeds on there. Right now you got Page Road, okay? Anecdotally, you may have a couple people say that. But if you were to drop the speed limit, let's say on, on two-eleven from the fifty-five to the forty-five, you'd, you'd have all kinds of people that are upset about that.
Ooh.
Okay? Um, and, and the majority of people, just like Jeff said, in my opinion, I agree with it, they know what the safe speeds are. There are some times you go on that road and, and I'm on, on two-eleven and it's fifty-five and there's a lot of traffic and I'm driving forty-five. Because it's safe to do that, because of the amount of traffic that's there, and you just adjust to it. And if you can't drive that, and if you don't have that capability, then you need to probably avoid some of those roads, um, that are on there. But I think the vast majority of people we have use those for going across our, our, our village and, and they do it in a safe manner. So, I still say, I don't support changing the speeds to anything that you show me here. Okay? The one argument I could hear, see on there was increasing the Linden Road down another piece, okay? That's about the only I can, I've, I've heard that, okay, maybe I would, other than that, I don't see a reason to change the, the speed limits personally.
I, uh, first of all, I will tell you that I am one person who has, on Midland Road, dropped how fast I've been going, had been going in the past. So this, that's anecdotal, it's personal.
I've slowed down too. I've slowed down too.
Okay. So, uh, I, it had an effect on me simply because that was the rule and, um, uh, and it's sort of a narrow road to begin with. Put it at any rate, and it's always when I'm about to come home from a trip, usually, and I've made it the whole way, you know, I've covered two hundred miles, and I'm thinking, I'm like, three miles from home, don't pull, pulled over now, because God knows what I did on the other roads, okay? So, um, but, but that, putting that aside, I am not for asking for anything more from DOT other than the Page Road one. So I don't want to, I don't want to open up that right now. Uh, I, I do think there's a, I can see strategically a case to be made, maybe later on, on the Holly Crest, on that part of the road that you actually just referred to, Dr. Morgan, uh, Linden going further out past Chicken Plant. Uh, but I, I think it might be premature. Uh, as I said earlier, I mean, the, the most compelling reason is that it's almost universal among the residents in that strip of Page Road, uh, which, and they, the other side of Page Road, it's the hospital side, that's an easy argument to say to folks. It's the hospital side, that's why it's that speed. Say, well, we're right across the street from, I've, I've had that discussion. Uh, so, um, I, I, I'm for making the Page Road request, uh, not for making any other requests at this time. But that's, that's my position.
What if we just increased our enforcement?
Right.
What if we kept the limits where they are and we increased our enforcement? I mean, I see, it's from the police report, we see the police are out there. It's more of a, I don't see many tickets being written or citations and whatnot, but, uh, maybe we should increase our enforcement some. And then the question is, well, do you give a ticket at thirty-nine or forty miles an hour?
Right.
On the, on the thirty-five limit, or do you, do you not? I, I don't know.
Um, we have selectively targeted certain roads for increased enforcement.
Sure.
Over time. I think we even did it a couple of years ago on Page Road. I don't think we've done it recently there. I don't think we've done it recently there. I think that whether it's enforcement or presence, presence has an impact.
Presence.
Right? And I'm not sure that, and, I mean, except for the really, there are a few everywhere. Name a road in Pinehurst, and, and if we go out and collect data, there are going to be some really egregious speeding on every segment of road out there. And it happens, it happens on Page Road as well. So certainly if, you know, if our officers, officers were out there, even in a present situation, they'd be able to deal with those people. But, um, I'm not sure that actual enforcement beyond presence will have much of an impact. And I say that because... Careful what I say. Anymore in our society, given the realities of our judicial system, police departments aren't writing tickets for less than 11, 12 miles per hour over the speed limit. These people are already mad about people going 40, so...
You know what, what, well, I'm, I'm not arguing necessarily for a wholesale reduction or even Page Road, but we talked about some differences of the roads. Page Road, although it may not stack up to be the most egregious of the four roads you talked about, or stretches of road. It is narrower, I'm going to guess, than each of the other segments we compared to. Which means that people who live on Page Road, well, you said it was eight feet. You said it was eight feet, because we were comparing it to the village.
Traveling, yeah. I don't know the answer to that question.
So I'm just wondering if the perception, we've seen this in other neighborhoods, Jeff.
Right.
The perception of speed, uh, when, when you're standing still, you're looking at a car, it always looks like it's going faster than it probably is. But if you're also on a narrower road, which Page Road may be, compared to these other stretches.
Narrowing, narrowing a road is a ta, traffic calming device.
Yeah, I know, we've, we've talked about that too.
Close traffic.
But I don't, it may or may not be, well, may or may not be having that page road.
Your point is, I believe, is that it may augment the perception of speeds.
Yeah. Yes, yes.
How would that change the resident's perception of speed?
You're closer to the vehicle if you're walking on the road. You're closer to the vehicle. I would just, I would guess that might be right.
So you're postulating that, since you're closer to the vehicle on that road, that they're going to think it's faster?
Yes.
Yes.
What support do you have for that scientifically?
It's true.
Oh, I don't know that we do, but I think when working on other parts of the village, where people have complained about speed on the roads around their homes, we know that they're narrower in their other places. And I, maybe Pinewild has an experience.
Get the data on Pinewild, because people, people right on the road thought people were speeding, and then we found that data that said the closer you are to the car, the faster it looks like it's going.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Well, I, I...
I don't, I mean, if you're along, I don't... The road being narrower doesn't mean that people that are outside their homes are going to be closer to the road.
No, I would just, he asked for data for that point.
Okay, my, my point on here though is, we're coming, John is speculating, or hypothesizing, or postulating, have you want to look at this? That the narrower road is going to cause the residents to think that the cars are moving faster. I think that's a stretch, okay? I think you're grasping at straws. Okay, because I don't think, I don't think the people are going to be closer to the road as they're doing it, they're going to be in their house, or doing it, they're going to be driving there, coming there, they're going to be pulling out of their driveway saying, okay, there's traffic in here and it's moving. Okay, that's where I think it's going to. Now, do I, do I argue that their perception is that people are driving too fast? Absolutely not. I, I do not argue that at all. Okay? And, and I, and I, and I can appreciate that. But I also recognize that a lot more people drive on that road than just the people who live on the road. And we're trying to balance things out here. Okay, so what's the safety index? What's the right thing? Because if, I mean, if we're going to make it safer, let's make it five miles an hour.
Well, that's, that's...
Well, that's absurd.
Of course.
Of course it's absurd. Then, then let's make it 10 miles an hour, that's still absurd. So at what point...
It's only allowed bicycles.
Exactly, you, you've, you've just, you just made my point for me, Patrick. At what point in time are we saying that we need to balance the, the, the speed out with safety? And I will tell you that the 35 mile an hour from the data that we have seen, from the different things that have been presented, seems like a very reasonable speed for that, okay?
Well, I, I have a different idea about it. And I think the numbers and the engineering and everything are all fine and large, and they all look good on paper. But we're talking about, you know, a bunch of our residents who live on this road, and virtually all of them are concerned about this. When people come down, barreling down 15501 from wherever, and they come swerving off onto Page Road, and they're heading for the, either to get around the traffic circle or to hit the hospital district, they've got to, they've got to slow down. And when you get off of a road where you've been going on a highway, where you've been going, you know, 60 or 55 or some big number, and you come back down into a residential area, it doesn't feel like you're going fast, because you're used to going fast. But you really are going too fast. I mean, I know that when I've been on a trip on highways. And I don't think it would be out of line at all for us to ask the DOT, to ask the DOT to lower that Page Road stretch, because it's coming, it's coming off of a very fast-moving road down and having to transition down toward the hospital area. And okay, 35 versus 25, you can make all the arguments you want, it's not... But I think we should ask for it. The DOT may say no. If they say no, we're able to say, you know what? We asked.
Okay, just a point of clarification. What you're describing might make sense right here, but we're talking about down here.
I'm able to get...
But, so...
Where are you talking about?
If you come off 15501 coming south.
Right.
You come on it, so this is not even residential, and there's almost no development along the road.
Where's the stretch you're talking about?
And then you have to go through the hospital.
What's the stretch?
Where it's 20 miles an hour before you get to this stretch that we're talking about.
Okay, then I'm looking at the wrong stretch.
I, that's, it's, this is traffic coming off 211 and probably some from 15501 on the Page. I guess I don't, I guess I think it doesn't hurt to ask. They may likely say no. But I think generally, um, some sort of presence from time to time on this road. I don't know how Glenn organizes it across the village, he's got a lot of streets to look at. But I think presence of our vehicles is helpful in calming traffic in, in certain situations, certain places. But I don't, I don't think it, I don't think it hurts to ask. I think we should show this analysis to the Page Road folks who have asked for it. They've come forward with very detailed information. I think they should see this, because it may help them understand.
With regard to presence and enforcement, I mean, we do have, you know, the, the hour-by-hour data. And we can see that the speeding is generally greater for southbound traffic than it is northbound traffic, and...
Volume is great, considerably higher too.
Volume, yeah.
The volume is 1,300 more.
On, on this section of Page Road, you mean, or?
So, and, and, and we can also key in on certain hours of day where it seems to be the most problem. We can take that tactic without lowering the speed limit.
I, I've got no problem with more vigilance on that and, and patrolling it and making sure that the, the speed was enforced. And I think the data you just talked about where it's increased southbound, it's also based on different times. Increase in speed southbound supports the argument that people are trying to avoid the traffic circle. Okay? I, I think that's very reasonable. And, and to create more enforcement on that certainly is reasonable.
To avoid the traffic circle if you're going this way, you can't use it if you're going this way, because you're just going to get off on 211 anyway.
Well, but if you're, full confession here, if you are, if you take Page Road all the way you start out at 2, and you go all the way up to Page Road, and you, to get on 1550, keep going.
Keep going, that's it.
Yeah. I, I, that's a shortcut for those of us.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Those of us who live this way. That's an avoid the circle.
You're not saving yourself any time, because there's never a few here.
It's all psychological, let me tell you. You think you're saving yourself time. You can't convince somebody, if they're not going around the circle, then it's saving them time. So that, that's not a, I, I can't have that debate with anybody. But the other thing I'll, I'll mention about the Page Road strip, I'm going to call it a strip, is that sometimes drivers instinctively have, and we may have all done this once in our youth, they know where there were certain stretches of road that were less, sort of, we'd say, subject to a lot of vigilance by the nature of where that stretch of road is. By how narrow it is. So there may be some people who hit the pedal there, because they've just come off 20, they just gone off a 20 mile hour. They've come, well, they've just come off Page Road from the hospital, where they've been chugging along, and they cross the road, and they hit it. Or they're in a hurry coming the other way, because it's just that stretch. That's what I'm, just, again, that's, I don't have empirical data there, but some personal experience.
Put a roundabout in it. Roundabout in it.
Are we allowed to use a traffic camera which takes pictures of you when you speed?
We, we, we take pictures all day long, but we can't enforce it.
You can't enforce it.
Force it, okay.
Carolina doesn't allow that.
You, you came for red lights, I think, but do the, your speed, the mobile signs.
About three miles an hour over.
I got one in DC.
Do the mobile signs work? Your speed is, do those signs work?
They have an impact, yeah.
It's a, it's a deterrent.
Well, that's, I mean, rather than put a police officer out there, you put a sign out there.
Speed sign, presence would be, speed signs and presence, I think.
We do all that, but...
Here's what I think. I think we should explain this analysis that Jeff and Jeff have put together to the Page Road applicants.
Good idea.
If they still want to go forward with the request from ourselves to DOT, I'm willing to entertain that. I don't think DOT is going to agree to it.
It's going to change their mind.
You don't think this, this, this information, I think it might, but I haven't met the people.
I think we've got to give it a chance, that's some, that's some compelling information.
I think it's fair to show them
I think they should see it.
That we've taken a serious look at it. We've done a, a big analysis. We're trying to find out, you know, as much as we can about it. And we've, and we're taking them seriously. I, I think it's fair to share, share this information.
If they still want us to consider putting the application forward to DOT, come back and tell us that, we may, we may change our, our mind. I'm not, I'm not, it'd be all right with me to make the request, I don't think it'd be met. I just think, as maybe Jane explained, we've had a request, put it to DOT, let them decide.
I believe they have sent the signal that it would be, but I can't say.
That goes back to...
At the end of the day, would be the case.
That goes back to your earlier comment.
Wasn't there a, a point here that was made, Jeff, in the letter, or the response through Pat Malamphie, that they would do this if we agreed to enforce it more, something to that effect, which I don't think we want to be...
And we asked for clarification, what they meant by that.
And I'm, I'm concerned we don't get drawn into that in a way that wouldn't be possible. Which is why just moving to have some more presence.
What they're pointing out to is that they, they know, and they know...
Yeah, they know what you're telling us.
Trained experts that we're going to create unrealistic expectations and they're asking us to sign up for it.
Yeah.
I think that that's probably correct. I've got no problem sharing this information with them. Go from there. I do not agree with requesting a drop in, in the speed limit, because I think it's the wrong thing to do.
Yeah.
I have no problem sharing it, but I also have no problem if they want, if they say, please, we, we would like this to be asked, to go ahead and ask DOT for it.
But get, get some clarification on, we'll lower it if you enforce it. I mean, what kind of obligation are they creating for us?
Yeah, we have to find that out.
Right.
I mean, they can't make us.
If they want special resources to do it.
When you say they, are you talking about residents or DOT? I asked that question of DOT way back when that letter came, and it was just enforce it at 25 like you would anywhere else. So it was not an expectation that we sit out there day in, day out, because I asked that specifically. I think they were just trying to throw caution at us, that's...
Right. I think that, as we may have learned in other neighborhoods, putting up the speed sign, rotating it around on a regular basis through some of these areas that we get questioned.
I think we've had it on Page Road.
Yeah, we may have done it for this, this year, or this, this quarter, or whatever. Doing that and having some presence.
That's a temporary effect.
Right, right. It reminds people.
After about four days of seeing it, knowing it's there, you just kind of ignore it going on, going anymore?
All right, so we're going to share the information with the Page Road residents, see what they want us, want us to do. We may not do anything.
They're going to ask, and they come make a presentation to you, I can tell you that.
They're going to which?
They're going to ask if they can come make a presentation.
I don't know that we need to do that, I think.
Isn't that what they ask you?
What they're going to demand.
What they're going to want to do.
What?
After they, after you share it with them, why don't you...
I think we've seen it.
Yeah, what about, Mr. Mayor, what if we, we...
Jane informed them that, you know, we have an open comments segment at the end of each meeting, and that's...
Well, they can certainly do that, there's, there's, yeah.
But they will, they will make the request if they can come make a presentation. I've already been told, or I've heard that that's what they wanted to do.
Well, let them see the information. And if they want to, if they want to come make public comments, they can make public comments, that's certainly allowed. But I don't, I don't know that the presentation from them is going to change the views I'm hearing here.
But I, I think we should also let them know that we've not, we are not totally closed our minds to sending this to NC DOT. We haven't made that decision, decision not to send it there. We, we, our decision is to share this data with them, see if it has an impact. And if it doesn't, we would, we would consider a next step. I mean, that's the way I think we've left it.
I, I think we, I think that's okay, but we know at least some of us are not going to consider putting it forward. But we can cite that at, at a later time. Mr. Sandborn, you're... I think they will be very interested in your...
We can certainly share this information with them. It's not going to change their mind.
Then I would like to hear why. It's compelling information.
Then, then they should come and speak to us in public comments. And tell us why.
I would love to know how they could have...
I learned a lot from your analysis, so I'm hoping others will too.
And, and also why an increased police presence wouldn't be enough.
Well, I think...
Those are all temporary, periods of time.
How long are we going to dedicate resources to that, you know?
Yeah.
It seems to me the...
Actual problem to begin with, getting back to the data.
Exactly.
And when you drop the speed limits, the demands are going to ramp up, because the speed limits are lower. People are still speeding, and we're still going to wind up dedicating the resources to try to solve it.
I agree.
At this point, I'm not supporting the request to drop the speed limit. I'm supporting the idea of working with the residents to respond, show them information that we've put together, that you've so very nicely done. And if they want to come and talk to us in public comments, I think that's fine. If that's what they want to do. But I think that, that communication back to them and showing them what we've, what their staff has done will, must be impressive to some of them. And I hope we'll, I, I hope to all.
Now, John, would you just turn it over to them, and, or have them come meet with Jeff and/or Jeff, and go through it with them like they went through it with us?
I'd have to go through the letter again, but it seems like there's, what, one or two people that are driving, that are, pardon my pardon.
There's two primary.
Yeah.
There's two primary people that are driving.
Yeah, and they ought to, at least, at least those ought to be respected.
And I met with one of them already, and, and the other one is, I think, would come in and listen, but I would agree with him, I, I don't think she's going to be in a
Yeah.
A mindset of, I don't think it really matters what the safety says, because she's already indicated, what's it going to take? You know, is somebody going to have to get hurt or killed, you know, that usual kind of thing that we hear, before, you know, we react. So I don't think the fact that there's been no accidents is going to matter as much to her, or, you know. They're passionate about what they would like to see happen with the speeds, which, you know.
We, we, we've made efforts so far by going back and redoing the study. And, and we have the more recent data than the six-year-old data we had previously. And, uh...
And there's, I mean, we're not, they're speeding on the road, but they're going to be speeding on the road no matter what the speed limit is.
They're speeding to that same degree on every street in Pinehurst.
Exactly.
Every one of them.
Sure. Maybe we ought to increase the limits. All right.
Don't point at me, I didn't suggest that.
Let's try to, let's try to get the information out to them and see what happens from there.
Like, you'd be okay if we made it like the Autobahn, right?
Uh, no, I would not. But maybe you are, because it sounds like you, you speed as you're coming down to town anyway.
I'm careful.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to obey the laws, I'm trying to make out what's reasonable here.
Is there anything else that will come before the work session?